I got two of them done. She's gonna break.
Satin, what are your table?
Oh, Mr. Please, this is the cool people table.
It's the word. Oh.
I thought this was the cool people table.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Purpose of this meeting tonight is review of our upcoming budget for 2026. And we are, this is the first time full council has seen the entire budget booklet. And so we'll be going over that. There'll be time to ask some questions. I want to welcome all of our newly elected and thank you for being here. This is something that you will be contending with a great deal in your tenure as counselor. Whether it's next year or the following years, this is a big deal every single year. So there's always a struggle, but we're not exactly in the happiest of positions right now. And so there's going to be a lot of things up in the air. And so Ms. Hofstadter is going to be presenting that to us so that we have a better understanding of what we're looking at and what we are going to be eventually approving. And this is an opportunity for council to ask questions and to clarify things where you're a little bit hazy on certain things. And so, and for the record, all council members are present with the exception of Counselor Vasquez. Counselor Fausto is present via Zoom. I have not heard from Counselor Vasquez. Is, did she say she's going to be remote? Or is she coming in late? Has anybody heard?
Heard from her.
Okay. We know that 5:30 is a somewhat tricky time for her work schedule as well. We can give her an opportunity if there's no objection to get here a little bit later.
Yeah.
That seems fair.
All right, so we have had the opportunity to brace for some difficult news. And so, Ms. Hofstadter, we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, I've been thinking about where I was gonna start. Uh, and I'm gonna kind of walk through a little bit of the process I've had to go through to try and put this budget together. Um, I've done a lot of digging into each line item for the last five years of records that I can find in our accounting system and also hard copies when I could find them. Um, trying to do a budget with the five years is a little difficult because you're coming out of COVID, so you can't use those years really. Twenty-three was a good year. Twenty-four was an ARPA year. That was a lot of money spent, so I couldn't use twenty-four. And as we know, twenty-five, and twenty-four is not finished, so I don't have any solid numbers for twenty-four. And as we know, twenty-five, um, budget was just kind of put together quickly, so I couldn't reflect on that at all either. Um, as I was going through trying to do this budget, I was finding that things were allocated into the wrong spots in a lot of places. I think I mentioned on Monday, one of the things that were allocated incorrectly was people being allocated in payroll. There was like several people that were being allocated to HR. And that's, they shouldn't be allocated to HR. Um, things were just put in the wrong line items, so it was a matter of trying to undo things and move things around to try and really get an idea of what's being spent and what's being taken in in each category. Um, and pulling hard numbers and also, like I said, having to go and pull hard copies to actually physically see what I'm looking for and if those numbers were true. Um, another thing I did was I pulled all previous, um, budget books that were stored on the shelves nicely. And, um, it was kind of disappointing because when I looked at 2010, it said that the city was having, um, financial hardship and there was gonna need to be cuts and there was gonna need to be, um, changes made. And the same thing was kind of repeated every few years. In 2018, it was the same way. In 2025, last year, Ms. Zabel said the same thing, that the city was having a hardship. And as I was doing these numbers, I was trying to be as conservative as possible with spending and cutting as much as I could possibly cut. And there was still a tooth million dollar deficit in the general fund. And that's not feeding any of the enterprise funds. That's simply the general fund is not funding itself. Um, with that being said, um, there's a handout that I gave you. And there's two sheets, and this is kind of the raw copy of the book. If you look at the raw copy of the book and you look at the very top line where it says "general fund", um, you'll see on the first one copy, there's a negative nine hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And that was me cutting as much as possible and basically saying that we couldn't spend any money anywhere unless it was absolutely necessary because we had to. Um, and as you see, that's still almost a million dollars with cutting as much as possible. So, um, I spoke with our leadership and we've, you know, have had some ideas. And, um, Mr. Lehman came up with an idea to help save some money. And we have decided we are going to outsource the dispatch center. And in April, the dispatch center will be closed. We're hoping, probably it's gonna be around late spring is what we're projecting. Um, so that will save the city, um, some money. Um, so we will have those employees at the dispatch center will have the opportunity to apply in Yakima. Yakima County will be taking over the dispatch for us. As well as that, um, we've discussed cutting all non-essential positions. So administrative assistants, um, and any any positions that basically are not immediately necessary. Um, and also any positions that, um, we were going to be hiring for. We have made the decision to do a hiring freeze. And so that way, if there's a hiring freeze, basically what that's gonna entail is that we're not going to be taking on more debt and negotiating with more people for higher paying jobs. We're going to keep it status quo. And if somebody was to leave their position, then they would have to justify how we're gonna replace that person, um, with just the essential employees being, um, staffed. If you look at the second page, even with all those cuts, we're still at a negative two hundred sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So that's not factoring in the positions we haven't hired, which would be public works. That would be the communications director.
Community economic development.
Pardon me?
Community economic development.
Yeah, community in economic development. And then, um, there was a few other ones, I believe, that were outstanding that we are just, we've decided we're not going to actually bring on yet. And then, um, cutting the other positions still didn't save us enough to come out of a deficit.
Um, excuse me.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And I, you said the economic development, but was there another position that you mentioned as well?
Public Works? Director?
Well, your plan would be then to not fill any of the open positions and cut some positions.
Correct.
Mostly in the dispatch at this point? Or do you have others?
Dispatch, um, administrative assistants and, um, some in finance. Um, people in finance can actually get moved to a currently open position for EMS because EMS funds it, it's its own enterprise that's funded fairly well and they actually have an open position. So we'll just, we're trying to move people into positions that can be funded within the enterprise. But even with the enterprise funds, um, we don't want to then put a strain on any of the enterprise funds to then be stuck back in a position where we're having to fund the enterprise funds.
Correct.
So, um, the other recommendation was the swimming pool. We know that it's really important for us to remain keeping that open. So our suggestion was to just, um, change the hours that it was open. And looking at the days that it had the least amount of business, just not opening like the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and being open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, when it was the most busy and, and could generate the most revenue. Um, also, I know that this year they had, um, taken away doing laps and, and having the lap section open. And so it would just be a matter of um, it would be a matter of, um, um, just working with the community and seeing what we could do with the swimming pool to, to keep it open and, and to really make sure that we can get the most use of the time that we can have the most people there.
Okay.
Um.
Further questions, Counselor Hart?
Particularly around the swimming pool, you were talking about having it closed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I'm just wondering how that's going to impact how the swim, swim, um, swim team, the Rotary Swim Team. Don't they practice like every day?
They practice every day. Um, typically they pay for their own lifeguards or could be asked to pay for the lifeguards, correct?
I don't know that they do.
They don't. As far as I understand, I believe it's not at full cost.
We, we pay for them, right?
Yeah.
We, we do have lifeguards and they do pay. Um, I'm not quite sure if it was, uh, full cost because that contract was already done prior to me coming on. Um, but I know moving forward, we have to do a new contract. Um, that is something we can look at.
I, I can speak on this.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, when, when I was the interim city manager, what we did was they were required to buy every swim team member an annual pass. And, um, at the time, uh, Finance Director, uh, Horner thought that that would, uh, cover the times that they would need the lifeguards in the morning for swim team practice.
Okay. We'll look and see how that, that flows. Counselor Fausto, you have a question?
Yeah, and this is maybe more for Jim. Um, the last meeting that we, um, I think, I believe it was a workshop. Um, you mentioned that we had five hundred thousand dollars coming in from Commerce. Um, when Deputy Mayor Galván, myself and, um, Counselor Vasquez lobbied in Olympia, um, we were able to, um, I believe lobby, um, our state legislators for one point three million dollars. Um, much of that money was supposed to go back into the pools or parks and I believe the gazebo. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy Mayor Galván, because you were there. Um, where is that money and those five hundred thousand dollars that are coming? Are we not able to take that some, that money that's supposed to be earmarked for the pool and make sure that it's helping fund the operations?
So, um, and that's a great question. So those are capital funds, um, or, or maintenance funds. Uh, those aren't funds that we can use to fund personnel with. That's for improvements to the facilities only. And that's, you know, that's, that's where we get into it with, when we get these grants and loans and things of this nature. They're very specific. They're not to fund personnel. They're only for maintenance and operations or new construction, so.
That's, uh, that was another, um, thing that I have found is a lot of times we're getting these grants and we're hiring people and we're keeping things open. And it's one-time funding, not guaranteed. And it's kind of, you're kind of defeating the purpose of saving funds when you're using all of the funds. It's, that's one of the things I've found with all of the investment money, that when we get investment funds from our LGIP or when we get investment funds from our bond, all of that's getting put into the operations and spent as soon as it's come in. None of it's actually getting saved and put to the side. So there is no, the only savings there is, is what is remaining in the actual LGIP. So when you're getting those investment dollars, they're getting used as actual revenue and operations. So they're literally using that as part of an income revenue so that it's just spent. And none of it's actually saved anywhere.
We got it for?
What's that?
Isn't that why we got that money? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just, it, it just, my, my question is, isn't that why we went to Olympia was to get that money for maintenance and operations?
Correct.
I don't remember.
It was just for maintenance and operations. It wasn't for operating costs, no.
No, not operation, but for maintenance.
Yeah.
Right.
To fix the operating systems.
Right, right, and keep them running.
Right, I'm seeing that.
But, but it wasn't really, excuse me, it wasn't really set up for income because we were taking that from a different source, I believe.
Right, and we, and we haven't expensed that in, I don't believe yet, have we? Uh, until we actually get those funds and, and, um, and, and get them where they're supposed to go and what they're intended to be used for, so.
Just on that same note, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, that, the money that was left over then from last year, what we used for keeping the pool open and the other projects that we worked on, uh, was there any surplus from that?
No, it was way overspent. The, the pool was at a negative at the end of the year.
But, well, we expected that.
Yeah.
We were just trying to get it open and keep it open.
Yeah, the, the cost, so we haven't been reimbursed for anything. Um, none of the money from Commerce, we haven't received any of it yet. So everything that was spent has been spent a hundred percent out of the city funds. To be able to get the Commerce money, you have to put in work orders for it. And none of those things were done when the pool got fixed. And so none of that funding ever came back to the city. So all of that funding has been sitting with the Commerce. And because none of it was done at the beginning of the year when the pool was actually fixed, um, then we still have the ability to go back and request those funds. But we have to then now try and find all the receipts and all the invoices to be able to get that done. Um, part of the issue I'm having is that the record keeping has not been great on keeping track of what has been spent on what. When it comes to grants, there's a really specific way you're supposed to keep track of grants. So that way you can, um, you, you get, you have to do your billing, which is you send out all the invoices. And so that way you can get your reimbursements. If you don't have that and you're getting audited, then that's when you can get in trouble. So none of those things have been taken care of properly.
Are we able to go back to the vendors and get the?
That's what I have to do for all the ARPA funds for every grant that the city has received in the last three years.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Rick.
Um, and what about the funds that were receiving through the utility tax increase?
Just for the pool itself, Ms. Rostow?
Yes.
So none of that was allocated correctly this year. I've gone back and I've had them reallocate all of those funds because none of it was put into the fund account since the beginning of the year. And I had to, when I went back in, that was one of the things that I found is that that allocation was never done. So I had to go in and reconcile all those accounts so that they could put those funds back into the pool account. So I can now try and balance where we're actually at with some of these funds.
Okay.
And that, uh, utility tax, um, increase is scheduled to come off?
Correct.
Well, moving along, I'm back to that.
Further questions, comments?
Um, I mean, I, I think it's crazy how the videos coming out of City Hall were nice and pretty, but nothing was getting done. So.
I guess we have to kind of figure that out.
I think that's kind of where my head is right now, too. Ms. Ripley?
When our former finance administrator left, did we have one to replace her?
Which, which one are you speaking?
When, when Debbie Zabel left, was Kelly Kosky supposed to replace?
Correct.
But it wasn't.
But it wasn't done.
It wasn't done automatically, was it?
The?
She was hired as a finance, um, she was hired as my.
Above her pay grade.
Above her pay grade, but she was not hired as a finance manager. We found that out later.
We did, okay, so that's, yes, as far, as far as council was concerned, as far as council was informed, she was hired to be our finance director and human services director.
But our finance people had nobody to tell them what to do. They were on their own.
We found out later that she didn't do finance.
And I just had to get that across. This is, this is.
That, that was, that came.
This is, nah, you have a mess.
Not your problem.
Right, right.
That came out to council later that she did not do finance. We assumed we were asking for financial reports. We were getting financial reports and later on found out that she simply was not doing finance.
Right.
And it also turned out that apparently a lot of the reports we saw were fabricated.
Right.
Which?
Wait.
Go ahead, Counselor Rostow.
You said fabricated. How, how did y'all come down to that conclusion?
Um, they did not.
Was there an auditor?
When, when we look at the actual numbers and looked at things, it turns out that none of that, well, not none of it, but a lot of it was inaccurate. It's like numbers had been pulled out of the air and, um, didn't have any connection with the real situation that the city was in.
Hmm.
Which was disappointing because as counselors, we, we were informed that she was a financial advisor, financial director, if she was in charge of that. And we were, I don't know, purposely misled, but we certainly weren't given the information that she was actually not going to do finance. She said, she was heard to say to somebody, "I don't do finance."
And, uh, I remember this then-city manager told us that he had found a unicorn and she was one in a million.
That's just, I guess we.
So, anyway.
That all sounds like hearsay. I, I mean, if it was a, I, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I'm not trying to knock anybody's credibility or competency, but if, if, um, I mean, if the, where, where's the auditing behind this?
I had one done with Springbrook and Springbrook looked into every, um, transaction that Kelly Coxkey did and found that she did none.
I just find it so appalling that within the last year, nothing got done, that Kelly Kosky did nothing. How mu, how, how far back have we gone? I mean, how much of this was Debbie Zabel?
Well, and that's, and that's the question, and it's a legitimate question because we are looking at the 25 budget, which, as we've just heard, was a lot of misallocations. And a lot of the year 2025 was improperly done. We've got a series of, yeah, bad, bad budgets, not even bad budget, it's just.
We don't even know where at.
Yeah, we're, we don't know where, I mean, 24 hasn't been fully resolved yet. 25, we're not sure where we are because we haven't got real information. And it is extremely frustrating to all of us because we are given reports through June, July, we're doing good, we're looking good. Uh, a year ago, twenty, in 24, we got the same thing in, in May, in June, July, we're looking good, we're able to move along, we're doing good, and all of a sudden the bombshells dropped on us. And now it appears that we find ourselves in this situation again. And, you know, in, in 24, we might be able to say it would be because that we didn't have headship in the manager's role to, to oversee all of this, but in 24 we did, or 25 we did. And so how is this happening? How is this getting past council two years in a row? So somehow or other, we're not getting the information. But the point of this evening is to talk about the 26 budget. Um, the 24, 25 budget, yeah, definitely means that we've got a pretty weak foundation for the. Um, the 24, 25 budget, yeah, definitely means that we've got a pretty weak foundation for the 26 budget. But we've got to try to figure out how we're going to go ahead. And we're looking at, you know, one way or the other, we're going to have to figure out how to generate some revenue, or we're going to have to make some more cuts.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Very quickly, so ju, just for the record, um, it wasn't until Monica Hofstadter came in that we started finding all of these discrepancies and it, and we're getting things in line now.
That's would be, appear, appear to be true, correct?
Okay.
That's our general assumption, I guess.
Well, last year, Mrs. Zabel, or was it Debbie Zabel last year? She, she said the same thing. She mentioned last year, I watched the, the council meeting and she mentioned that there was a deficit. And that, you know, there was some things that needed to be cleaned up. And, um, I've had some of her notes as well. And so just kind of digging through some of this stuff and finding what I've found, it, it, um, they're definitely, I mean, the numbers just aren't, they're not there. Yeah. And the way that things were getting allocated and moved around is, is you can tell that they were just trying to even every pot out when you actually allocate things to where they're supposed to be. When I went to the conference, the very first thing that the state auditor that oversees this area said to me was that I needed to fix the allocations. And that the cost allocations were incorrect. So when I got back to the hotel room and pulled up everything and started looking at all the allocations, I realized that it was more than what I had saw originally. Cause I literally have to open every single line item. And when I mean every line item, I mean every single GL code for any payroll, I had to open it up to find out how many people were in that GL code. And that's how I found like four or five public works people were being allocated to human resource. And so this has been consistent. And when you do cost allocations, you can't just put a percentage on it. You have to actually do a cost allocation equation. And that was not being done either. And that's one of the things that the state auditor, someone who brought that to me.
Okay.
Well.
And I, I just want to go on the record saying Debbie Zabel has 40 years of excellent service to, to cities and, and towns across this, across this valley and area. And I, I don't think that we need to bring Debbie Zabel's name into this. I think we're clear on where, where the problem lies.
And, and if I may, we're, we're not here to bash anybody. We're, we're here to present our budget. The, the, the history is the history, um, and then we're faced with it and we need to figure out how to move forward. So.
Yep.
I agree. So let's.
Move, keep on moving.
Move forward, I guess. And the questions of the 24, 25 budget will be answered over time, I think, hopefully soon.
I, I, I just have one thought about kicking the can down the road.
Don't think that.
And I don't mean that at you, Dean. So.
Thank you, Councillor.
Um.
Don't think that's.
So there's a lot of policies and protocols that kind of need to be put into place. One of the things I had mentioned when I first started was there wasn't a lot of, um, oversight in the finance department as far as having controls. Um, every single employee had access to the vault. Every single employee had their own key to be able to get into their own till and everybody could just freely go in and out of the vault. And that was, I was kind of shocked that that was happening. Um, there's supposed to be a custodian to the vault. There's supposed to be one person that allows, you know, that gets the funds for you. You're not supposed to just freely go in and out of the vault. Um, that can, like, every, every step, the mail, previous administration, um, just said, open every piece of mail and, and send it to wherever. And I, I was like, you can't open every piece of mail. It's, some of it's confidential, some of it's HIPAA, some of it's, you know, private information. You're not allowed to open all the mail. Little things like that. It was like just little controls. There was just none there. Um, so we're trying to move forward, trying to fix some of these things that are not in place. Starting with having some finance policies, starting with having some procedures that are written down that everybody understands. That's why we're doing the training. That's why we're going forward and doing all the things internally that we can to have these controls so that the employees that have worked there know what they're doing and know, understand why they have to do it the way they're doing it. This isn't something that comes from me. This is something that comes from the state auditor's office. Everything I print out comes directly from the straight out, state auditor's office. I don't make any of the rules. They do. So every single thing that I've shown them is directly out of the state auditor's office. Um, having the PO system started at the beginning of the year so that the spending is, uh, a lot more under control is going to help a lot. Being able to actually use purchase orders and see where things are allocated and where things are getting spent. And having accountability and some of the things that are getting spent on is going to be really important. Um, that process has always been available to the city. Apparently it's just that module within the accounting system has just never been used.
Okay, it was talked about last year.
It was, you're correct.
Do that. And it was never implicated.
We have training next week, so it's going to go out to leadership that, there's two days of training for everybody to be able to get on board. And then we actually are going to have the PO system ran through the finance department.
Good idea.
Well, let's, uh, put that on, uh, keep going through the numbers.
All right, carry on.
Um, I'm not sure if you want to go more into the other departments besides the general fund, but we can.
Yeah, I, I think we should.
Go through some of the book?
Let's just go.
I think so.
Go item by item here.
So, um, on page 25 is what the proposed, uh, classification and compensation schedule is going to be. The things highlighted in red or, um, of a different color are either positions that were recommended to freeze and/or, um, change.
Freeze is in blue and red is in.
Change or eliminate.
Eliminate.
Yeah. It's either one. Cause some of these, um, are just going to be changing items. Another thing to take into account is that minimum wage is going up 2.8% this year. Um, with the fact that the union agreements were not done since 2023 is when they, um, the fire department, the public works, code enforcement and planning, none of those were negotiated by the previous administration. And so we've had to retro pay the fire department, um, that was on the last payroll. Um, public works will be retro paid on this, um, December's payroll. And then we also have the planning department and code enforcement as well that will be getting retro paid. And that's going to be for the years of 24 and 25 as well.
Will we get a budget amendment for that?
Um, yes, you're, you will have to.
Yeah. No, it's just that we have to do that. And I haven't seen a budget amendment.
Yeah, I'm trying to get all of 25 done because all of 25 needs a budget amendment. When I looked at it, I realized that everything was kind of shoved into one line item. For instance, the police department doesn't have any, um, budget at all for their patrol. They only have a budget for their administration. So the entire police department doesn't have a budget.
I'm just wondering.
Go ahead, Councillor.
Um, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't take those budget amendments and try to just do them one by one.
We've got two, two regular meetings.
To go. Well, then we may have to double them up. But I, yeah, we don't have enough time to do it.
Correct.
One by one. Yeah, you're right. Okay, I'm sorry. Keep going.
Um, so the book starts on page 28 with the legislature, which is the council. And, um, covers salaries, wages, um, and other charges that are in there.
Can I ask a question real quick before we go?
Yep.
So I see that the animal control officer is still on here. It's not on the, on the cutting chop. I mean, we're not going to cut it. Is, is there a reason why we didn't consider cutting that position? I mean, we, we don't have anywhere to put these animals. So why have a position?
So currently we can, and Chief Lehman, you can help me out here. Uh, uh, we have a room for four animals, I believe, here at the police station. And we have to hold them for 24 hours and then we can take them down to Yakima.
But that's only for, um, injured and dangerous dogs, if I remember correctly. That's the only dogs that they'll take. Mr. Lehman?
We can, we can take any dogs there. However, we have to make sure that we have room for the ones that were legally required to keep. So if we take up four stray dogs in the first two weeks of the month, and then in the next two weeks, we end up with one that bites somebody that we're required by law to keep, it would be a, a, above our contract. And I don't know what the rate would be for that, to be honest with you. They could charge us whatever they wanted because we'd be required to keep it. So what we've, we've been very cautious on what we've taken up there. We have taken some strays, but, uh, it's been few and far between.
Who's taking them up there right now? Like who's, who's responsible? We don't have an animal control officer.
Um, we've had our, our rookie officer do it a couple of times. Uh, she's in field training, so she's driven dogs up there. Um, I think we had a corrections officer do it once. It's just been kind of whoever's around that we can find that can drive it up to Yakima.
Okay.
All right.
I, I know that in budget discussions last year, the, the, the plan was to eliminate the animal control officer. Well, you have three positions. You had two code enforcement and one animal control. The plan was to reduce that down to two positions and code enforcement was going to take on some of the animal control duties. Well, shortly after that, one of the code enforcement guys left, so it left one of them. And, um, my understanding is he threw the union or whatever, he was unable to do animal control duties. So, um, it, it's left us with nobody to do it. Um, I, I don't know if we want one code enforcement, one animal control. We want two code enforcement, uh, and give them animal control, which would have to be negotiated. I mean, there's a couple of different ways to, to accomplish this, but, um, three positions, I mean, maybe we could reduce that to two. I don't know. That, that would be something, um, Jim and Monica and I can discuss, I think. But my understanding of this last year, that was, those three positions were reduced to two.
Correct. I, I remember that.
Remember that.
Yep. I don't think that got reflected in the budget though. So Monica would have never known that.
Hmm. I think it.
I know we had a discussion on it, but I don't remember if it was reflected in the budget or not. And I'd have to go back and look.
Well, I, I know that it was the discussion and the decision that was made. And then, um, at one time, the previous city manager came and said, my understanding is that that position was funded and he wanted to fill it. Um, so I don't think it ever actually got written out of the budget. Um, so.
Would have been when Zabel was here. Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, good question there.
We'll have to look.
And I will say that is kind of, um, also a, um, kind of a sticking point is that although 54%, or 54 to 56% of our, our budget is wages, um, we do have numerous amounts of unions that are in our city. And so we have to abide by what their, um, CBA says. And if they're within a certain position, then, um, they do the duties within that position. And if they go outside of their, that, you know, job duty, then they can get paid an incentive or out of pay or it's called out of, help me out. What is it? Out of? Out of classification. Thank you. Um, so out of classification pay. And if they get that, then, um, it's also an increase.
But it would be cheaper to pay somebody out of classification than hiring a new animal control if.
Well, unless they negotiate, because if you're then saying that they're going to be doing the position, they can.
Renegotiate.
Yes, they can file to say that you are now saying that's their job.
And they have to go to classes to be animal control.
Correct. There's certification required for that. You're right.
Okay.
All right.
So next is a city manager's office.
But first, while we're on the city council, why he was 2024, other services and charges, $36,197, and now it's $5,000. What was, what was that spent on? Do we know?
What are you looking at?
28.
24 actual. That's a good question. I don't remember seeing.
36,000 of other services and charges.
I don't know what we would have done that on.
Is that training?
No.
Not $36,000.
Not $36,000 worth.
Oh, no, I was looking over here on 26 with the $5,000 here.
No, we're on the 24.
Looking at that. Well, we sent a lot of people to training though.
Well, we had an awful lot of supplies as well. 10,000 then. We're down to 1,077 for 25, 1,100 for 24.
Where does that, uh, 50,000 city manager spending go? Where does?
That wouldn't go on city council.
That would be out of our pocket. It comes at a different place.
$1,197.91 in office supplies, $2,949.63 in employee recognition, um, $6,136.55 in small tools and minor equipment.
For council?
Mm-hmm.
That can't be.
That can't be right.
That's.
Again, this is 2024. That's why this is probably some of the allocations, because I haven't looked through 24 yet. I've been focused on 25.
Okay. So there's something wrong with this picture because council did not, I mean, small tools for council does not exist.
That doesn't make.
Other than perhaps our laptops, but. Not for those numbers.
This is for Amazon Capital Services Tools, wire, surcharge protectors for council chambers, TV installed, um.
So was that all of this?
Would that be all of this stuff? Why would that come out of council?
Council chamber equipment, iPad case, council camera, council camera setup, um, sunny side hardware.
It would have been all these screens and.
Council room, council TVs.
Well, that answers, that answers a lot of that question then, because that came to all of us.
That was just a big number.
Post, post COVID, the, some of the requirements and expectations changed and we did, I guess, yeah. We, we did approve spending. I, I didn't remember that it came out of council funds, but I.
Didn't come out of ARPA funds?
I don't remember. I have to go back and check. We'd have to go back and check the, the records of the council meetings and see if that's where it was supposed to come out of. So that might've been an expenditure some of the ARPA funds we're looking for. That's a good question, Councillor.
Don't have that book with me, so I can't answer that.
Yeah. And then there was 21,236 in professional services.
Wow.
21 what?
1,236 in professional services.
Well, curious about that, too. I'd like to.
Think we are a lot, be a lot smarter.
Sunny Side Media, Code Publishing, um, the Agenda Management Portal.
Is that supposed to be?
And I'm thinking, and when the clerk's here, she may be able to answer some of those questions because she's
Yeah.
handled a lot of that, but.
And these are legislative.
And again, this is 24 and we're, we're here to look at 26, but definitely I we, we want to find the answers to these questions, uh, hopefully before the end of the year, honestly.
Well, at least we get an appropriate.
Or, or at least get closer.
Well, that was 24. 25 was different.
Yeah.
And I think that the, the 25 is, is more in line with what we were doing.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
So Monica, where you at now?
Okay. And I will, I want to clarify that the 24 is the actuals, the 25 is what was appropriated, meaning what they, um, budgeted for the position. Those are not the actuals to date. I can give you the actuals today, but you should be seeing those in your, um, in the, um, budget positions that I'm giving you, um, the meetings.
Right.
Um, so then the city manager is what's next. And then this discusses the rules, responsibilities, accomplishments of 2025. And then what's expected in 2026? Again, when, um, the appropriation was made for 2025, I'm not sure if it was, uh, made off of the 24 actuals because the 24 actuals were much higher. and the twenty-five actuals are also much higher than what was um budgeted. So I set the proposed at a higher number, only because of what was it's kind of hard to tell how much it was it should be with double payments for quite a few months.
Correct.
Did you write the roles and responsibilities, or do we have them somewhere? Because I mean, I like what it says, right? The city manager oversees the city's day-to-day business and supervises the city's daily operations as carried out by the department directors, so ultimately, city manager has a lot of responsibility and has to kind of lead the department heads.
Yes. Which one are you looking at?
Uh, roles and responsibilities, the second sentence. Or the manager.
Yeah, was that something that you found that already existed, or did you put that together?
Some of this is from the two thousand and ten budget, and then some of it was um implemented from other budgets and then also with Mr. Bridges and I putting our heads together.
So some of so some of it is, I mean, most of it is something that is already previously.
We we didn't recreate the wheel.
I wouldn't do that either.
We don't recreate the wheel.
That would be silly.
Okay, good. Thank you.
But I should say it too. So when you you see the accomplishments, and then you go down and see executive ongoing responsibilities, and this will be in each department, those are goals that when, you know, you go through the year, council should be asking, are we following through on these goals? Where are we at on implementing some of these goals? Are we, you know, are pursuing them, or are they just words on a piece of paper that somebody put out for you to read in November of two thousand twenty-five? So um, again, that's a you know, it's a it's a living document. You should be able to refer back to this and say, okay, these are the goals that staff stated they would perform, and that's up to council to make sure that the manager and the directors are following through on these goals, so.
Right, and part of this is covered in the city manager's evaluation. I think, though, that it has been suggested that that evaluation be updated for many years, and it definitely needs to be evaluated, and all of these things need to be um covered in that. So.
And again, you'll see that in every department that's listed in here. You'll see the accomplishments and the the roles responsibilities, accomplishments for the year, and then the ongoing responsibilities for two thousand twenty-six. So.
And then there's measurements, performance measurements. What to measure against. Um, they're again suggestions, and they can be added or changed, so I like to say that the budget's always a working document. You want to always go by it, but always shoot for less. You want less expense, more revenue.
Correct. Alright, council, any questions on the city manager's portion of this booklet? Alright, carry on.
Um, so next you're going to have recreation, and that would include um the swimming pool, that would include community center, um senior citizen center, uh, the city parks, um, it's it's all the facilities within the city that the city has. Right now, um Hector has been at the helm of the Recreation Department.
There there has been a lot that uh we look through and and we are looking at more to see what we can do and um I guess make our recreation, the community center, obviously is our focus point, because we we do have that nice facility there that we want to be able to be using. Um, so that is the focus point of moving on to the new year that we're going to try to get out there. So ob- obviously with the pool and working with the swim team and the community for to keep our pool open. I mean, everybody needs a place to go to have fun during the summertime, so.
And um I had previously mentioned it'd be really good to try and get some sponsorships from businesses, um, local businesses in the area, and also um partner with maybe a grant writer to be able to write some grants as well, so that we can really get a lot more of the community um action stuff and uh covered by grants and by sponsorship, so um that we are able to hold these events.
So last year I suggested that to a previous city manager, and he really didn't go with with that idea. It didn't go anywhere, but I did suggest, you know, reaching out to businesses and 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 seeing, you know, what they could sponsor, what they would like to sponsor, right? Um, I even volunteered myself that I would be a sponsor, but um they had the program then.
And we actually had a business volunteer sponsor a day of swimming or the first day of swimming or something that we're picking up on that. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, they did have one this year.
Okay, Counsel Ripley?
You know, um, Counselor Frosto, she delegated her uh money from council to the community or to the senior center every month. And I don't know if they are doing anything with that. I know that there's a overage in there, and I don't know if that can be allocated to the swimming pool, or if you would want to do that, Vicki. I don't know. I don't know how that works. But um the senior center, what, how much does it need a year? And it's not that much. It's just an idea, you know, there's.
I I think that um you you're talking, I don't know. I I think that it's more than you would want to think it is, because we still need to put some upkeep on the senior building. It still needs to be painted. It was supposed to be budgeted to be painted this last year. It was supposed to get a new roof this last year. Neither of those things happened. Um, so there was money set aside for that, but that that particular, those projects did not happen. So that money was for that. Um, and the money that's been uh that I think Vicki, Vicki, they use the money um for whatever projects they're doing, the senior dinners, the special events, um buying a new bingo machine, I mean, things like that, adding adding different things. I mean, that money is and for and for, I think, the internet, because we don't, we weren't on the, for a while, we weren't on the city's internet. And so we paid internet or the senior center pay, excuse me, the senior center paid internet um independently of what the city was paying. It wasn't on the city's internet system.
On the city's bill every year, every month.
Well, it is now, yes, but it wasn't there for a while. It wasn't last year. It is now. It took it took Elizabeth Alba to get that taken, put on the uh so, yeah, but at first it wasn't. But there's other things, too. I mean, but that doesn't really. I mean, we if we could do something similar to that for the community center, I don't see if there was somebody else who wanted to to donate that kind of money. I mean, I'm
Counselor Hancock.
Just thinking.
My first thought is, I see how much that senior center gets used, and it gets used daily. And it's a lot of people's life net for the Meals on Wheels and all that kind of stuff. It's it's not used sparingly. It's used daily, and even on Sundays it gets used. So um I I I do not want to see the senior center get cut, because that's that's a, to some of these people, that's a life and death issue.
I wasn't talking about cutting it.
No, I know. I wasn't saying you were. I just am putting my word out there.
Okay, further questions or comments? Alright, thank you. Carry on.
So with the um Recreation Department, there's a not a budgeted page, because that's currently something that I want to kind of work with the council to discuss how you guys would like to move forward. I have it in the hard numbers, like on the backend, but I didn't want to put it in the budget book without going into more discussion about how you guys feel about what kind of hours we can do, you know, and working with Hector. And so that way, we want to make sure that the community is getting the need, their needs met as well. Um, and supporting the community center um because there is people that do rent the community center, and there's the senior center and the pool. And so with these things, uh, I mean, I would like to propose trying to go to businesses and seeing if we can get sponsorship, and maybe trying to generate some um grant revenue as well.
Counselor Hart?
I'm just wondering, I I noticed, I'm just looking on the page here for page thirty-one, you have under Recreation, you have the Parks, Recreation Programs, Museum, Community Center, Pool, but you don't have the Senior Center, Senior Citizen Center. So maybe that's where.
Very first one.
Yep.
That says Parks on the line.
And then the senior.
Senior Center.
It says.
Senior Citizen Center.
Where does it say that?
It doesn't say it on the graph.
On the box.
It says it in the paragraph.
It's missing on the box.
But it's not in your top row is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it is here in the text underneath.
Yeah, okay, fine, but it's not in the.
All added, all added box.
I added a box. I just figured as long as we're talking about it, it should be there.
Good catch.
No, I saw it was in the second paragraph. I just thought it had to have its little.
Ms. Frosto, you have a question?
She have a question?
Oh.
No.
Oh, okay, okay. For the record, Counselor Vasquez has joined on the Zoom. Okay, thank you for that. Welcome, Counselor Vasquez.
Thank you.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm on the road, sorry.
Alright.
I was trying to sign to Jafet earlier to let everybody know Karen was on there, so that's why I picked up my phone. I was like.
Yeah, it doesn't show up on the screen, so.
Big enough, okay.
Um, so that is something that I think that maybe um just with some thought, we can you know, sit with the finance team, sit together and and work through some of the ideas we can do for our community, and that way we're ensuring that we still have these things available. Um, so next um would be the Contingency Fund. Um, so after doing some review of the Contingency Fund, in two thousand and eighteen was the last time it was pulled, the funds were pulled out of it, and it was four hundred thousand dollars was pulled out in two thousand and eighteen. Um, after that, no money was put back into the Contingency Fund. So um that's why it remains at the thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars.
And every time we do something like that, and as long as I've been on council, it has always been, we're going to have a plan to replace these monies. We're going to have a plan to be ready for vehicle replacement. We're going to have a plan, and everybody has always said, we're going to put this plan in place. And then we get a couple of years down the road, and that hasn't been done. And now we have another emergency, and we have to pay for this, and we have to replace this and that or the other thing. And so I guess I want some sort of assurance that we are going to do what we can to replace these funds, because it is important. I remember the first year I got on council, there was argument, I remember Counselor Hancock saying, these refunds need to be replaced. And now we're still in the same position thirteen years later, where they haven't been replaced, and we've got these really low balances on these funds, and it is, it's bothersome.
One of the um suggestions I had made while I was with the um Finance Committee was that the investment funds that are um coming into the city from the LGIP funds and the bond, we should be allocating those um into capital accounts for capital funds or and then the Contingency Fund, which is called the Rainy Day Fund, and then also your um ERR Fund, which is your Equipment Rental Revolving Fund. So that way, when you're saving, you're not saving it into the actual operating account. You're saving it into a capital account. And um the allocations that I would like to do would split part of those general funds, the portion that would go to the general fund, it would split between the um Equipment Rental and then also the Contingency Fund. The Contingency Fund acts like a rainy day fund, so that if there is an emergency, we can pull these funds out of the Emergency Contingency Fund, and that's what it's for, is to cover those needs. Um, so that would be my suggestion, is to stop all the um, investment funds from going into operations and to move them into the capitals and into these accounts here.
So Monica, when you say investment fund, you're talking the interest on those funds.
The interest, yes.
That's a, that's a good.
Because the interest goes into our bank, and it's roughly between eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a month. And that money has just been getting rolled over and spent. And it gets allocated to a bunch of different pots, and I tried to like track the changes, and it was really odd kind of how they were doing it. Um, I will tell you, a large portion of those investment funds were getting put into our garbage fund, which was a little alarming, because that just means that the garbage fund was never actually meeting it, its self balancing. It just means that we were putting the funds into that when it's not even one of our accounts. It's a pass-through account, so we shouldn't be paying for that account.
Correct. Counselor Hart?
It seems to me, though, the reason that that might have been happening is because at various times during the last few years, at least the last five years or so, that every now and then the garbage fund gets out of whack, and we needed to have some way to to balance it back up again, because they just would randomly send a bill that was like, you know, because people overfilled their garbage cans or something, and then we had to have extra money to pay for that, and I think that's where those those dollars came from.
There there have been a number of those types of situations, but at the same time, like like she said, it's a pass-through account. I think what's happened a lot of times, too, is the interest that we've been making has been helping us cover costs in other areas. So we continue to put that in the general fund and continue to use it, because it's covering costs that otherwise we wouldn't be able to meet.
Can you to overspend?
And so it does cover up uh potential, like you said, potential spending beyond our where we should be.
Yeah. Um, so that that would be one of the proposals I have, is that we start actually allocating those funds correctly and taking whatever remaining ending balance that is sitting in there in those investments account, roll it over into the correct areas being that the capitals and into the ERR or the Contingency Funds, so that they're no longer just going into operation, and that if, for instance, if somebody needed to use the funds that were sitting in those investments account, like the LGIP, then they would have to apply for a loan through the city council to actually pull those funds and to utilize those funds um, and have a reason, and that not everybody would be pulling those funds at the same time, so that way we're not draining any of that account, and then that would be a loan to where they would have to pay back with interest. So it would be the interest that every other department would be losing it because they took those funds out, and they would have to feed it back into the fund and have an actual um business plan as to how they were going to.
Funds are supposed to be?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Question, um, so is is that something that you would want to put in the budget policies for going forward?
It would be one of the finance policies.
The finance.
Yeah, just how you how you would be allocating your um investment interest, and then those investment funds and how those investment funds can be utilized. So utilization of those funds.
Okay.
Um, just a question.
Uh, for the record, Counselor Frosto has left the meeting. She she had another meeting to go to, so. Okay, she's going to try to join by phone.
Okay, I just had a quick.
Counselor Hart?
On the Contingency Fund, it seems at the beginning of the year, beginning of this year, somewhere back in um, at least in June or July, that we had eighteen thousand appro- in in the uh Contingency Fund.
No.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying that, no, I looked there. It was.
That that was, that's what we were told, because we wanted to take five thousand out.
Yeah.
And before that, it was at eighteen thousand. We took the five thousand out for the fireworks. That's where we took it out, was the Contingency Fund.
I went through the account, and I balanced the whole account from the last.
Well, I know we did that. I I don't know why it doesn't show there, but I know that that's what we did.
I'm not sure where they pulled it then, because it.
Maybe that's in the legislative.
Because I I went all the way to two thousand and eighteen and pulled every single record from two thousand and eighteen forward.
No, I was just talking from last, this last.
So it was pulled, it was pulled perhaps out of a different budget, but I remember we did vote.
Yeah, we. And then we decided we weren't going to increase it. We were going to leave it at thirteen.
I thought it came out of the city manager's fund.
Did not.
It was a.
It came out of the Contingency Fund.
That we didn't know of.
Well, it might not have gotten pulled out then, is what might have happened, is it just probably didn't get.
That's what it said on the checkstep I got. That's what it said on the check step I got for the Fourth of July fireworks. I'll bring it in to you.
Okay, yeah, they might not have pulled it out of this fund then. Because.
I just was questioning the difference is all.
Yeah.
We could, I, I can do some research on my end with my work.
Okay, that's interesting because, yeah, when I went back, the thirteen, the thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-six, that has been the exact amount since the last pull in two thousand and eighteen.
No, that's.
So the tourism fund is the LTAC. One thing I'm going to notate, and this was notated also during an LTAC meeting, is that you're going to notice that the ending balances of some of these do not roll over to the beginning balance of the next one. And that's simply because two thousand twenty-four has never gotten closed and finalized and reconciled. So because of that, the balance, the beginning balance for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five are, I don't want to say made up balances, but they're pretty much just a journal entry that was put in there to say this is what they thought that the beginning balance should be. I opened every single account and for the last five years, every fund account did an end and beginning balance to be able to find where I thought the beginning balance would be and then projected the rest of the expense for the rest of the year. And then that's how I got the beginning balance for two thousand twenty-five was by going through all the accounts. And I believe LTAC has a meeting soon.
Thursday, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Four o'clock in council chambers. I'll go ahead and promote it.
Next is legal services. You'll see legal services are pretty spendy. I'm not sure if you have questions about this fund, but this is one of those funds that I kind of say it is what it is.
I have a question. Is this for the, the city attorney?
Um, so this is for the city attorney that advises and assists the city council, city manager and staff.
Would, would it make sense to have, and I guess, in-house attorney with the, these amounts?
Well, you know, I think that's always been the question, right? Since Mr. Kunkler left in two thousand nine, you know, we had in-house counsel. It's finding in-house counsel with that broad-based experience and knowledge to cover a city, right?
Gotcha.
And, you know, typically this is what you see in the, the, the smaller communities is contracted services because they have a firm that, that kind of does the broad spectrum, all aspects of city government, so.
And Counselor Hart, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we talked about this in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, hiring a in-house.
We did.
Legal counsel.
Yeah.
And it didn't cash flow.
Cash flow.
Because it wasn't just the attorney that counsel uses, it was also other services that, that were involved in that, that would not be an in-house attorney that would cover that. There was, I don't remember all the details of that, but the city uses other attorneys as well. There are, we use attorney sometimes for negotiating legal contract or labor contracts. We use attorney sometimes for certain litigation issues that the city attorney isn't able to handle. Different things like that. So there's more than just the expense for quote-unquote city attorney.
Yeah. And, and I will say right now, it's pretty high just because, again, we're, we're doing a lot of union negotiations. And so with that, we have a attorney that handles those things separately than the other city attorneys, so, but we're paying for both because that's specific to our union negotiations.
And this, and this also is for our municipal court too, for prosecution. The legal services here, according to what your attorney says here.
Okay.
And for, okay, never mind.
Okay, further questions? All right, carry on.
Next is the finance department. Um, finance department consists of, is this one split up? Let me double check. I don't think it is. Yeah, so it's the finance and city clerk together.
Where does that say that?
So city clerk was under city manager.
Yeah.
I thought.
I think that's where.
Well, that's.
Independent.
He oversees it, but I don't believe that the wages for the city clerk are put together with the city manager. The wages for the city clerk, it's weird how they have it budgeted, but it's actually budgeted in what they call the fourteen category. So the five-fourteens are the city clerk and finance.
Okay.
So with finance, one of the, I guess, benefits of finance is that we can do a lot of cost allocation, meaning that our utility billing, because most of their time is spent taking care of the enterprise funds, they can be cost allocated to those enterprise funds as well as our human resources and our payroll. And then also accounts payable, they get allocated to departments depending on how many invoices for each department. It's, it's just a just kind of a split of how much services they're doing for each, each one of those funds. And so that kind of helps keep some of the cost for the finance department down when you're able to do those cost allocations.
With respect to the general fund?
Correct.
Questions there?
Just, well, if the city clerk's in this section, there's no mention of her in here or expectations, finance or performance measures.
So how does that happen?
So is this something where the responsibilities are under the manager, but the payroll is under the finance department? Is that how that works?
It's.
Because I'm looking under city manager's office. I don't see anything for the clerk either.
The only says, the only thing that it says under city manager as far as the, the city clerk is that all statutory duties. What does it say there? Let me just, 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 yeah, that this, that the executive assistant to the city manager, city clerk provides administrative port to the city manager, city attorney and city council provides all statutory duties of the city clerk.
Oh, it is there?
Yeah.
Okay, so the duties are under the city manager and the.
But it doesn't, doesn't really lay out.
And the payroll comes out of the finance department?
It actually looks like it comes out of a different spot when you get back here. Comes under personnel services, which is not the same as financial. Because it has payroll and then human resources under personnel services as opposed to under the finance department. Which I don't, I don't understand that.
Personnel is going to be H R. Payroll does a portion under H R just because of the benefits portion. So our payroll person has a lot to do with handling some of the items that H R would do. For instance, they have to, any kind of payroll deductions that are imposed by court order, they would take care of those. They also have to deal with H R with those items because those are confidential. So it's, and benefits as well.
Further questions or comments? Okay.
Um, the miscellaneous government allocations are to different groups, I guess. We have, for instance, a pledge that was made for Yakima. Oh my goodness, it just slipped my brain.
Crime lab?
Crime lab?
It might be that. It's twenty thousand a year. It's two, two ten thousand dollar payments.
Y V C O G?
And they actually recently just.
Might be Y V C O G and it could be the crime, crime. Is Mr. Lehman still here? Chief Lehman here?
He said there was a fire alarm. He messaged.
I didn't hear.
A fire alarm is.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that that was going on because I sure didn't hear that.
Yeah, he messaged me and he said, I just have a fire alarm.
I'm back, but I'm lost where you guys are. I'm, but I am back. Go ahead.
But I just have a quick question. The money that, that for the crime lab, where does that money come from?
The police department.
Do you happen to know? It doesn't come out of your department.
Yes, it does. I have a specific line item in my budget.
Okay, for the crime lab. So the other, the twenty thousand that you're talking about probably is for the dues. You said miscellaneous?
What page are you guys on? I'm sorry.
Page thirty-nine.
Okay.
I don't actually see where it says twenty thousand, but that's what we're, the number we're look, looking at.
And this is for?
Oh, there's.
Y V C O G.
So that's probably your annual, that's probably your annual membership to Y V C O G, separate from the crime lab.
Yes, they're two separate things.
Correct, yep.
And I'm just wondering if we do, pay him half?
Twice a year.
Twice a year. So that could be what that is, Monica.
Counselor Ripley?
That twenty thousand.
You know, I just heard tonight that Yakima is not going for the A W C membership. What exactly do we get out of the A W C membership? Do we know?
I'm going to turn that over to Counselor Hancock because I think she has taken as many courses in the A W C classes that if anybody I know and can probably give you a rundown of all the city's benefits besides just legal, pre-legal advice, so.
Well, and especially we've got on, oncoming counselors that we are going to have to have them trained for the Open Public Meetings Act. And you get a lot from, from going to those classes and, and you, you network with people and you hear other ideas that other cities have. And, and it gives you a wealth of information. I've, I've gone every year that I've been on council, save one year. And I always come back with lots of information and, and ideas. So, you know, they, they, they do everything from budgeting to financial to, you know, insurance, that kind of stuff, so.
Legal.
In addition to that, there's all sorts of resources for the city to use. It allows us access to forums to say we want to update a code, we want to update something else. We can easily access what another city has done, get some templates, take a look at that. And instead of reinventing the wheel, we can take what some other cities have used and that's all out there for us through the A W C that allows us to, to do an awful lot of stuff. Plus, there's also the legal advice that we can get for free. It doesn't cost us anything extra, which many of us have taken advantage of over the years.
It's, it's, it's a valuable ask, very valuable resource for those of us who have, have taken advantage of it and paid, you know, had some interest in it.
And I honestly believe Yakima will come to regret leaving the A W C, but that's.
I, I, yeah.
That's just my opinion.
They're probably the same spot. We are trying to figure out where to cut some costs and stuff, but.
I think they are and more so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, moving along.
Municipal court is next. Please ignore the box that says judicial personnel. There is no assistant court administrator. Again, court is one of those items that is kind of necessary and it, it is a cost. So it's, it is a need for them to have a minimum of three people over there. They have a lot of paperwork to shuffle around in there. And then we have the cost of the judge and then the defense attorneys and everything that comes with the court.
Okay, questions or comments about the court?
We said we were taking on Tapanish and that we were going to see a, a big increase in, in funds coming in from taking on Tapanish. Is, is that figured into this?
Again, the allocations for Tapanish were not done correctly. So they had been billing Tapanish off of a budget, not after the actuals. And so those have been reconciled and there's going to be another bill going out to Tapanish for the difference of what's actually owed.
So there will be a bit of a boost.
There will be.
You can look forward to. Okay, very good. And I, and I do, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you said that there's not an assistant court administrator.
Correct.
Although maybe there would be some desire to have one at some point, but right now we're okay, okay.
But we're not cutting anybody from the court?
No.
No.
If we could hire another person, she would, she would really like it if we could have another assistant.
I don't even dare suggest it because I'm afraid she'd come over.
She'd come right over here. This is what for, yeah.
And I would deserve it if I suggested it, even in justice.
We don't, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. Yeah, yeah.
All right, further questions on the court? All right.
Just, just kidding.
Um, next is the Public Works Airport. We don't necessarily have people that work out there, but I do need to allocate some funds out there for the amount of work that they do. Cleaning up and maintenance at the airport. That's something that Hector and I are going to get together to be able to allocate some of those funds or some of those wages to kind of have a true cost of what it is at the airport. So at this time, Public Works is holding all those funds in their own departments. But some of those funds in reality will be moved to the airport section to, I just need a little more information on how much time they actually spend out there.
Counselor?
I'm just thinking as far as the, the City Side Municipal Airport out there is we have funds, that federal funds that for keeping up the, the, the airport, the, the, the landing strips and also for internet out at the airport. And, and in addition to general maintenance around the buildings and the, and the grounds, is that not right?
So right now, our street department goes out there and keeps it sprayed down. I'm not sure how it's getting funded off the top of my head. That's why we need to sit down together and see how it's going to be parted off so we can get a true number. I know the cleanup itself is, was funded by Eagle when we went out for that grant to get it cleaned up.
It seems like though that we have a federal.
We do have some because of the weather station that we have. We have to have internet there. And I think there may be some funding that comes through there and there may be some other funding that comes through the federal, but I know there is some federal funding that comes.
Might be, it might be such a thing as talking with the guys who serve on that commission.
So.
Probably know, wouldn't they, Jim?
Right, so we receive a, a, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from the FAA for airport-related projects. And that money can be spent on an annual basis, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per project. Or you can bank the money for three years and spend it on the fourth year. So you have a total budget of, of six hundred thousand dollars. And if you don't use your money, then you find another airport partner and you loan that money to them. And then, then when you need the money, they, they give it back, they give you their share back. So, but those are capital projects. Yeah, that has nothing to do with the maintenance.
And I know, isn't there also some, we have some extra auditing because of that federal, that particular.
Right.
Federal money.
On, for projects, yes. So when we do a project, we do have the federal funding on it.
Further questions? All right, moving on.
Um, general obligation bond. I will say there's only two items in this. Right now, the total annual payment that is being made towards debts, bonds and loans is just over two million. It's about two point three million a year.
And we have one of them that's coming off?
Not till the end of twenty-seven.
Okay.
That would be the Monson Bond.
So these are, these are.
Go ahead, Counselor Ripley.
But then when the Monson is sold, wasn't there bonds sold back then to buy it that need to be?
Those come off in twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah. Um, so next, the community block grant. There was not any programs or anything allocated to this for '25. So again, I did a reconciliation to see what the beginning balance should be. When it was put in there, it was kind of just an estimated amount. So we're, when '24 is completely closed, we'll have better numbers. But there is money sitting in the community block grant. Might be of interest to, to some of the committees.
Okay.
And then you're going to see your REIT one and your REIT two. So your real estate excise tax is collected through, well, we collect it through Yakima County Treasurer. And so they recently just kind of loosened up how things are able to be spent. REIT two can be spent a little more like REIT one now, which before they were kind of dictated on how you could really spend the funds and it was really like you can only do this or this. And now the funds are a little more flexible, although they are still only allocated to be able to be spent for capital projects. And then also the REIT two was able to be spent for affordable housing and homelessness. And they're saying that it's supposed to be expiring. That was expiring on January 1st of 2026. But there's like a little subsection in there of 5C that allows you to spend it if you do X, Y and Z. So it's, it's really, it's interesting to read and see like, I guess it's up for interpretation sometimes, but if you, if you read into it, you can spend it in certain ways. And so I know that that was one of the things that state legislature had went out for was to be able to use those funds, especially during COVID for house, housing needs and affordable housing.
Counselor Ripley.
I know that money was given to Damian Davis. I can't remember his business, but it was for soccer fields from, I think it was REIT one. Has that been stopped?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Good, good. What's the explanation of?
That was the soccer management plan that was supposed to, had, he was, had been contracted for. But with the, obviously the troubles we're in with budget numbers, we paid him $15,000 a day on a $35,000 contract and, and I've recently notified him that we are, are terminating that contract. So to save that remaining $20,000.
Thank you for explaining that a little better.
Both of those, I pulled a little explanation and just because I know there was question on how REIT one and two could be spent. So hopefully that helps. If you would like more information, definitely let me know though.
Just, just out of curiosity, I was just reading here that the, you're saying that the ability for REIT funds is set to end in January 21, although that may change.
That was for the housing and.
For homelessness.
Yeah.
And affordable housing.
Correct.
And certain, with certain, with certain limitations. I'm thinking that probably there'll be probably some legislation going forward. If I did, if I remember correctly, I read something on that, that they're probably going to re, look at that again to maybe to continue that. And I know that the AWC is going to be kind of working with, because the communities, we're, we're facing homelessness and, and affordable housing an issue. So we still need to use those funds for that.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I put that little subsection in there because you can kind of use that, those funds. If you read that subsection, you can use those funds in a specific way. But I, I do believe that they will go back and discuss this further on how those funds can be used.
Legislature will.
Further questions, comments?
Water maintenance fund is 410. This gentleman to my left is well aware of the water maintenance area. So if there's a lot, any more question besides numbers, that's the guy.
Does anybody have questions? So I, we are working on getting a well rehab back on so we can get it to, get our ERUs up, which is the Equally Residence Units. That way we're not at a standstill with, or being holed by a new well that should be coming in play. We are working with the port, obviously with the land that, you know, they proposed that they would like to give us. But we need to jump on the, uh, jump on it right now because it's, it's a five-year project. And we need to make sure we have enough ERUs to sell our water out to the community and for the new developers that are coming in town.
Okay, questions about the water fund? So I notice it's been bumped up quite a bit from '25's appropriated 268,000 to just a little bit over a million dollars. Is that just to reflect actual expenditures or is it to reflect expected expenditures for '26 with the new well, I mean, the well rehab?
So two different things. The rate increase plus when I looked at the actuals on, again, this was just what was appropriated for '25. And when I did the actuals and kind of went back to see what the projection was and then did the 5% increase, I could see that it was going to be able to carry itself at that point and that's why there's an increase there.
Okay, so that is good news because the water fund kind of got itself into a tight situation with a couple of years ago with the Sixth Street project. And all of a sudden we had a grant that didn't come through and we were already starting the project. And so I'm glad to see that it's looking better. It doesn't look fantastic yet, but it's looking better.
One of the proposals for a finance policy would be that any excess of, so you always expect there to be a rollover, a beginning-ending balance, so that way you're carrying yourself into the new year. And then you should, with enterprise funds, you should at least have 45 days. I would propose that anything outside of that 45-day fund for a rollover be rolled into the capital reserve and for the, those funds to then be moved out of the operation and into a capital reserve. So that way, anything that was above and beyond is saved for those occasions. And that should be happening with every single one of the enterprise funds is that if you are outside of your 45-day, because you want to have your next month's expenses, but you also want to have your 45-day reserves. Once you have those 45-day reserves, anything that, a percentage of that on top of it, if there's anything that is considered excess funds, which there shouldn't be, but if there is, then those funds should automatically be put into your capital reserve account. Because as we know, the water district has a couple wells that need to be fixed this next year. And there's always need for emergencies.
Something always happens.
It just seems.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Ms. Mayor, it seems like, you know, because we need to have in our general fund, you need to have that 45 days balance to start the new year as well.
The general fund should have more than that.
Well, but, yeah, what you're talking about though, some of that money that goes into the general fund to start the new year comes from these, these funds that you're talking about putting in a different, a different 45-day plan.
The enterprise funds don't go into the general.
No.
Okay.
They don't.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure we're not doing Orange and Annapolis.
No, no, no. No, the, the enterprise funds should be sustaining their own fund.
Right.
So if there's anything, it should just automatically roll over into the, the capital water fund and it should stay there for water only. The general funds should have, they have their own capital account and the general fund's capital account is for all of our facilities and maintenance for our buildings that we own, that like City Hall, for instance. So if we were to need any emergency funds, we should have those capital funds in our own capital account for the general fund.
Question. So it says here that well six experiencing operational issues. I thought well six and seven were taken care of.
Taken care of those, yeah.
So well seven was, that's when Mr. Ortega was here, that we got it rehabbed, got it back online. Well six, we are working on it currently right now to get it rehabbed, to get it back online so we can use that here soon.
And are, are we, I guess with well seven, did we save the receipts so we could turn them in for, for the money that the legislator gave us? Because it was, it was, I think it was part of the. That was, that, that wasn't in the, from the Department of Commerce. That wasn't in the 1.3 million. So that, that's its own state revolving loan fund. Where we got that money from. So yes, we, we are documenting. Okay. Yeah. Gotcha.
Yep.
There's next the sewer maintenance. Again, the same thing. The sewer should be sustaining itself. Any of those excess funds need to be rolled over into capital. For instance, the emergency declaration we just recently had with the sewer department was, is a great example of why we need to have those funds in the capital account. So that when we do have these emergencies, we have the ability to pay for them. There are definitely some improvements that are going to be needing to be made. My understanding is the biogas is the biggest one.
So yes, right now we are working on the, our biogas project. We are just waiting on materials to come in so we can rehab it and it, start working from there. I've noticed that replace or repair two lift stations. I am in talks with Mr. Bridges and my wastewater supervisor to get the one on Exit 67 rehabbed and not have to replace it or, 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 but we'll repair it to make it up. So hopefully it won't cost us that much more money.
That was an estimated 1.9 million dollar project.
Which one was that?
That was the one on Exit 67.
The, the JM Eagle.
Yes.
PW pipe lift station.
Yeah.
So, so we are working on that to get the maintenance back up on there.
So, and when you, you, you look at this, this fund, one of the things to remember here as well is, you know, and especially the public is, you know, we, we did receive some loans and some grants, 50% loan, 50% grants. And so if we, if you see like, well, they're carrying a lot of money and they're ending fund balance, those loans haven't been, begun to be paid back yet. So that's where those monies will be paid back. And, and so next year's budget, you'll see that allocation going out, right? And so it's, we have to be careful when we, we talk of all these big projects that we don't take on such big projects that we don't have a fund balance that can pay them back, right? Because that's, that's the key. You know, that's always my concern is how much can we borrow and still have, not have to raise rates exorbitantly to, to cover everything, so.
Further questions? All right.
And then we have the sewer revenue bond and debt services. I don't propose we're taking any loans in '26, but we could be. I'm not sure. I'm hoping.
As of right now, the only thing, the only thing that we're, we'll be going for is just a seed for the biogas to make sure we have enough money to fund that project and the headworks that needs to get replaced.
And lift station.
And yes, Knight and Lincoln's lift station.
So we, we've actually been in contact with, with our Capital Path, which is our lobbyist, to help us try to get funds for those major repairs at the headworks and for the disinfection system at the treatment plant. So I would try to get those, if we do get those, you know, typically those, those, those loans are, you know, 1% to 3%. So you, and it's all based upon average income rate. And so, you know, typically Sunny Side's has a very low average income ratio and so we get the better loan rate to pay those back, so.
I was just.
But those, those, those grants, so when, I have to interrupt Counselor, but when those opportunities come through, they, they, they will be brought to council for approval to put in for those grants or potential loans so that council knows that the financial impact that's going to be prior to us taking that stuff on, so.
And that way we have all our numbers and you got.
Counselor?
The seed was the, the S E I D one.
Yes.
Yes.
I always want to do with two Es and a D, but I know it's not. I just thank you for.
They intentionally spelled it wrong to drive people that like to spell correct crazy.
Yeah, I know, I know it's, it's, it's economic and development, investments and developments, but you know.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Jim, we had a conversation about the sewer repairs and, and the possibility of maybe turning it into insurance. Is that something that?
So yes, we are, I am looking into that. Obviously I have to get all the estimates and make sure that I have that to send it up to the insurance to see if they're being able to, more, it's going to be cost efficient for us.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Very good.
Um, garbage is next. I did receive notice that they will be increasing the rates for us. So it's 2.9% increase to the city this year. And then, so we have our increase as well, so that will hopefully help stable it. And we'll, I'll keep track of that. And one of the things we're going to be doing is we're going to try and at minimum do a quarterly reconciliation to make sure they're balancing. It's always kind of a month behind, so you have to wait and look backwards to see because their billing comes in and we're billing out for last month. And it's like, it's like, we have to make sure all of our invoices match so that way we can pull the same numbers and make sure what we're, what we have and what they're charging us is balancing. And then we're not taking a loss on the garbage.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor. I'll ask my question in a minute.
So, so I think in the past, the, the garbage, they've increased the rates to the city, but just the city didn't pass on the increase to, to the residents. And that's why it's always been off balance and the general fund's been kind of subsidizing the, the fund. So is, are the residents going to start seeing an increase then come January?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
So I, you know, and I, and I guess there's a logical reason why it's a pass-through. But I mean, if you live out of town, you are billed directly by the garbage collection company and you send them your payment. Is there any incentive for us just to turn the billing over to the Yakima Waste and let them bill the clients?
I would prefer it. We have, so it, it's been, the communication with them is, it's really difficult. So everything is done through email. And recently all of their emails were blocked and not coming to us. And so if there was any changes, we weren't getting any of their changes. And we had been emailing them and asking like, hey, we have these customers with these issues. What's going on? And we were trying to call them. I personally had emailed out three times, tried to call and I wasn't getting a response. And so then we found out and my IT guy looked into it and realized that most of their emails were getting blocked and then all of a sudden all of their emails were getting blocked about a month ago or maybe a little more than that. And so, yeah, we're, we weren't, we haven't been able to update any of the accounts. We haven't been able to. So in this communication is, I guess, normal for, from what I'm being told is it's just really difficult because everything is done through email. And if they miss an email, then they're not getting a request. If we miss an email, we're not getting the billing information update. So it's, it's a lot.
So in a meeting I had with other mayors in Yakima County, the consensus was that most mayors who use a different garbage service were a lot happier. And so it might, and, and I don't know what would be involved in us switching. I mean, would it? And so it might, and, and I don't know what would be involved in us switching. I mean, would it be all new cans and bins and everything? But, um, you know, Grandview is the only one that operates their own garbage service. And I know we've looked into that and it was ridiculously expensive. But would there be any value in talking to the other agency that's been around the valley and see if we can get better service from them, better communication?
So as a matter of fact, I, I just wrote that note to myself, potential RFP for new garbage services. So we can take a look at that. And, and, you know, we have to do our due diligence. I know we've been with Yakima Waste for a long time. So.
How many?
As far as the cans go, I'm, I, I don't know if they.
Two major ones, um, based on disposal being the other one.
Okay.
I think, I think they, I think the cost of the cans, I think are, uh, it's been a long time. I think the last time we went out for an RFP when I was here as Public Works Director, I was involved in it, but I believe that they, when they went to the new cans, I think I was, when the new cans for the automatic arms to pick up, I think they, the cost of cans came back to the city for that. So I think those may be, might say their name. I will have to find out for sure, but, uh.
It's worth looking into, I think.
Yeah.
It'd be really nice if there was a little better technology, maybe if you can.
Cause I believe they.
Utilize something online instead of just hoping that they get your email.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So they do charge per can. Uh, we have your nineties, uh, three hundreds. And then obviously I do believe they have bins. But, uh, I don't think we allow bins in here in town for the residents.
And we'll, we'll, we'll look into that.
So maybe there's some savings that we can get.
Next, we're going to go to Mr. Haruk down there, chief. This is the fire control. Um, we're going to be going into fire control, fire capital reserves, and then ambulance, um, is the next sections. So I will let Cameron speak up a little bit during this. And then I also have, um.
Right, right, Chief? Explain your department.
Yeah.
Do you want, I have this spreadsheet that you gave me if you need it.
So sorry, I was not, uh, aware I'd be speaking on this, but, uh, sorry, if you, if I have the deer in the headlights look, that's why. But, uh, I mean, of course I can, um, field any questions, but kind of as a, as a breakdown of our department, um, you see kind of the flow chart there. Uh, we handle, um, fire control, fire suppression services, uh, that bleeds down into, um, potential investigations, ongoing training, initial training, uh, as well as, uh, fire preventions, fire codes. And, uh, plans of view for fire protection systems for, uh, for new businesses as well as businesses that are, um, upgrading their systems. On the EMS side of things, uh, we obviously respond to numerous, uh, EMS calls. That also includes, um, ongoing training to meet the requirements of our EMS certifications, as well as working in partnership with our billing company to ensure that our services are, uh, are collecting appropriate revenue.
Questions for the chief? Deputy Mayor.
So I'm, I'm not one to complain when the, the, the numbers go down, but how are we saving personnel benefits like forty seven thousand or is that just? And forgive me if I don't believe numbers, um, going forward, but is that a?
I can explain.
True number?
That would definitely be a Monica question.
So again, um, the reason why on that particular one, you'll see that is because of how things were allocated again. When I was telling you that things were getting allocated incorrectly, people were getting allocated into the fire department that were not supposed to be. And so I had to take that payroll out. So it looks like Cameron gave his guys a cut, but he didn't.
I mean, it's a good explanation.
Is that the same thing, same reason why our supplies are down seventy five thousand? Or are we just not feeling like we're going to need that?
Again, it was the allocation between EMS and fire. And so when we looked at those allocations and we looked what was supposed to be getting built to fire and what was supposed to be being built to the EMS, they weren't being allocated correctly. And so when we actually went through line item by line item and, and, and he helped people, he did most of it because I'm not going to tell you what the half of that stuff is. So, um, yeah, it, we realized that a lot of those things were not getting, allocated to the right departments.
You know, just going to tack onto that. So one thing that, uh, Ms. Hofstadter and I worked on is, um, a lot of things were lumped under accounts that were far too broad. We weren't able to, budget appropriately for things such as personal protective equipment, um, you know, EMS supplies that are used on a regular basis. So, we've put together to have more appropriate bars accounting for that. So we're able to get an accurate, accurate picture and build a budget more appropriately in the future for what our actual expenses are for those specific items versus them being kind of lumped and umbrellaed into a, a larger, more generic, uh, fund.
Uh, I did notice that two thousand twenty five, all of the uniforms were put under, um, benefits for employees. And uniforms are, are not benefits, they're a supply. So that's also why the benefits look higher. And some of those categories is because they were removed out of their benefits. So it is not a benefit.
Didn't ARPA buy, what was it? One of your fi- fireman suits?
Correct. So, um, yeah, so we did, uh, counsel, a lot of us, um, some ARPA funds to purchase, um, personal protective equipment or, or we call turnouts, um, for our staff members. That is correct.
Okay. Was that, was that replacements or was that, um, brand new ones?
It was a combination. So they were all purchased new, of course, but, um, some were replaced, um, that were gear that was either in poor shape or on its way of being, uh, dated out as we call it. So personal protective equipment has a 10-year, uh, usage life. And so at that point, you know, the unfortunate part for us is that even at that 10-year mark, even if they're in fantastic shape, we cannot use it in, in service gear because it's outside of manufacturer specs with that. So, but yes, to answer your questions, um, we did receive ARPA funds and purchased, more appropriate, uh, PPE for a large number of our staff. So we, we appreciate that.
And, and if it was more of a safety concern, right? So that way if there's a fire or whatever, you guys don't have to go and use the same ones.
That is correct, sir. And so that allowed, um, majority of our staff to have that set of gear to wear. Cause when we go into, you know, any fire, especially, you know, a, a structured fire, there's a tremendous amount of carcinogens and, and harmful things that get into the fibers of the, of the protective equipment. Um, and so it goes through a proper decon process, but what that does, that takes that gear out of service for a couple of days, which in effect, in effect, took that firefighter out of service for a couple of days. So that ARPA funds allowed us to have that set of gear for them. So they have that backup set. So they are still in service, even if their initial set of gear is being, uh, decontaminated.
I think that's why we kind of agreed to do it.
Yeah, right. Exactly. That was explained to us very carefully and we, we did.
Seemed important.
Cameron, can you, can you discuss a little bit the increase, the number of annual inspections completed by on-duty staff and what that does for the city?
Absolutely. So this is, this is a, a, a tough one that we're trying to manage with our current staff. But what that does is, so those are our fire and life safety inspections. And so thank you for bringing that up, counselor. So, those are our requirements for certain businesses, um, predominantly, uh, we're going to see those in our daycares, educational facilities that in order for their licensure, they're required to have those annual inspections. So we provide those. In addition to our ongoing inspections, um, those help, um, our, you've heard me preach right, multiple times about, uh, Washington Survey and Rating Bureau being our, in essence, our report card as a, as a fire department and the services that go along with that. So by going out and conducting these, um, inspections, not only allow us to, to build those relationships with the community, with those, you know, business owners and whatnot. We're also able to use that as an education piece, um, for, hey, this is why these codes exist. This is why you don't want to block your fire exits. This is why your extinguisher should be charged and inspected. But ultimately, when it comes full circle, is that helps lower our WSRB rating, which is then oftentimes reflected in that business owner's insurance premiums. So I'm assuming that's what you're alluding to, counselor.
Yeah, I just wanted you to explain it.
Yes.
Because when I had my business, um, you know, there's stuff like you can't stack within two feet of the ceiling and.
We don't want to block sprinkler heads. We don't want to obstruct fire flow, water flow, things of those nature. So again, those inspections are not just for the health and safety of the businesses. They're, they're, you know, patrons and so on, so forth. But in addition, it does help the city's overall survey and ratings, which again, then come back to that customer with lower insurance.
Yeah, saves the customer a lot of money on their insurance.
That is correct, ma'am, especially commercially, yes.
Have a question. Those inspections, are they billed directly to the business or, and who builds those?
So, yes, so those inspections, um, I, I won't take too much of Corey's thunder, but one of the projects that he's been working on and done a fantastic job of is, is building to our open gov system, which cause probably been briefed on a little bit, we use that for permitting and a menagerie, different things. My involvement is pretty much in regards to fire permits and inspections. And so, um, for a lot of the, uh, inspections that we, uh, conduct that are done by requests, and again, those are going to be, be those educational buildings, daycares and whatnot. When they go in there and they request the inspection, they actually can pay right then and there. Um, and so, yeah, it is, it is directly to the, to the, uh, the business owner. Due to staffing, we haven't been able to be as proactive as we'd like and to go out and conduct those onsite inspections. So we haven't really seen how it's going to play out in that regard. Um, we've been pretty much conducting our respects, our inspections on a request basis, um, up to this point.
So that's the reason. I mean, I remember seeing you guys going into my office and then doing inspections, but I hadn't seen you for a couple of years. So, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Further questions?
And, and also to just up to this point, counselor, there previously there were no charges for those inspections. Um, and again, they were done when they could be done. We are still conducting what are called pre-fire inspections and those are, um, each shift is required to do a minimum of one per month. There's no charge for those. Those are not, um, out there necessarily to enforce or look over fire codes. Those inspections are for us to build a, a, in essence, a map and a layout of that building. So God forbid, if there was a fire or an emergency, we have access to quick, um, demos of the building where we know their fire protection systems are, where their evacuations are, routes are, excuse me. And so again, it helps us mitigate that hazard quicker by already having that familiarity of the business and its, and its surrounding complexes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Ambulance.
Again, chief, it's like you.
So piggybacking off what we spoke before, EMS is, um, a, a large part of our, our emergent response nationwide. The, uh, average for a fire agency is prompt, roughly about 80% EMS. Um, we run approximately 87% of our call volume is EMS based or EMS focused. So with that, um, we have our ambulance service, which allows us to provide quicker, more efficient response and quicker transport times for, for our citizens. But, uh, again, that kind of piggyback, piggybacks off of all of our fire operations, but most certainly can answer any questions you might have regarding those.
Questions, Deputy Mayor?
On the revenue side, on the intergovernmental, is that right? Those numbers, are they going down that much?
Yeah. So, um, for the last two years, they've been putting the G E M T funds in there and they over calculated. The person that had worked, um, and putting those numbers had duplicated them. And so when the budget was made, they didn't realize that those were duplicated. And so the number was doubled and, and it was way more than, I mean, it's way more than Cameron would get, but I'm sure he would love to get that much, but.
Wouldn't complain.
Those numbers were duplicated, um, by the previous person that was in putting those, that information.
And, and one thing is we've talked about, you know, albeit quite some time ago with, with ground emergency medical transporter GMT funding that we do receive, that is not something that we want to put towards our operational expenses because those funds are not guaranteed and they fluctuate every year based on a number of different, uh, variables. But i- is not something that, and Monica and I have discussed, uh, in quite a bit of detail, those are not funds that you want to put towards operations because if you're relying on those to keep the doors open and the lights on, at any point in time, those funds could, could be gone. And so up to this point, we've been using them for capital expenses. They, um, have covered our last two ambulance purchases, which is great. And that's kind of the continued plan to go that direction. But those are not funds that we want to put into our operational budget because again, they're very, um, we'll call them unreliable.
They're also federally funded. So it's not guaranteed that the program will continue. It's a, I think they annually decide whether they're going to do, is it annual or biannual?
Kind of both, but predominantly annual. And one thing too, with the G E M T funds is, is it is a one large pool of money and that pool of money does not change. So the more entities that put in for that fund and are awarded those funds, the amount that gets allotted to each agency diminishes. So, um, because more people put in doesn't mean that pot of money gets bigger. And so while we've done quite well, um, and, uh, done pretty well as far as, you know, our revenue coming from that, um, as more entities put in for it, as funding becomes less available, those funds are bound to, um, decrease unfortunately.
That's right.
I, I guess I just, I maybe, maybe I, I think I understood what you said before, but I'm, but I'm still a little confused here. So you're going on those intergovernmental funds from nine hundred and fifty thousand appropriated in twenty twenty five to three hundred and fifty thousand. Is that right?
That's not a question I would be able to.
I, I, I don't understand why there's such a, a $600,000 drop in that, in intergovernmental. It, that doesn't make any sense to me why there would be that big, you know, if you're going to go, you said that it was, it was inputted twice.
It was, it was duplicated. So it looked like.
Yeah. If it was duplicated, it would, it still wouldn't come.
It was nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but.
No, that's what the duplicate was.
Okay. So then why, why take out six hundred? Cause that's not, that's not even half, that's not a third, what you're leaving in there for, for twenty six. You're only leaving three hundred and fifty thousand. I'm just curious why the number.
Because after looking at.
Drops so much.
Because after, after looking at the numbers, the nine hundred and fifty thousand was a duplicated number. So it wasn't, that had to get removed out automatically. That's something that also has to get corrected in two thousand twenty four because it's still sitting in twenty four incorrectly. So twenty fours is duplicated and it's not that amount. So then what happened is in twenty five, it was duplicated because that's the budget based off of twenty four. So both of those numbers have been duplicated off of, and somebody who input the information incorrectly. So then when we went back and looked, we realized none of those numbers were correct and that it's half of what was projected.
That's, but, but you can see where the question is jeepers. Why do we drop into the cellar?
If you looked at twenty three, it looks just like what it is right now.
So, so it's interesting to me though, that in twenty four and then twenty five, this was rolled over.
It looks like it was a copy and paste.
Yeah, it was. That's what it looks like. Yeah.
It was. So twenty four is incorrect. And so because twenty four is incorrect.
You said twenty three as well?
No, twenty three is correct. Twenty, twenty three was done correctly. Twenty four was done incorrectly. And so when twenty four was done incorrectly and the budget was made for twenty five, it was copied off of twenty four. That was incorrect.
And, and one thing too is, is when it comes to, you know, if we're talking specifically GMT, for example, um, we don't know what we're getting for twenty twenty six just yet. And so, you know, we, we try and remain conservative on that. Our, our historic amount over the last few years, at least since I've been here, has been closer to about $400,000. But again, we don't know that until we get that, uh, projected amount from them, which typically comes roughly around January, February at the latest.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that a little bit because I was like going, wait, this.
Further questions, your counsel?
All of those are wrong.
All right, moving along.
Rob, are you still available?
I am.
Okay.
All right. We're going to be going into the police department. We're, um, on page fifty seven.
Okay. I think, I think I'm there.
Okay. So the accomplishments, I copied off of his notes because he's out of town and he didn't get a chance to sit with me, but thank you for taking such great notes.
Um, so I guess we'll move on to page fifty eight, I think, and we can go over, start with the law enforcement budget. Um, I think the personnel benefits, uh, decreased that, that, uh, is going to have the same explanation as Cameron, uh, just got from Monica, that stuff was allocated in different areas. Um, as far as supplies, the, the request for the increases, there's a couple of things there that we're going to need this year. We, we did not buy ammo, uh, for training or for duty the last, uh, I think about two years, and that's usually about a 10,000 to $15,000 purchase. And that's so everybody in the department can qualify twice and we should be, be replacing our duty ammo about every other year. We also, one thing is when the previous chief got a budget and, and signed a contract with Axon, which is our body cameras and our car cameras. He set that up for, I believe it was fifteen or sixteen patrol cars. We now have like 22 patrol cars. So we need to get in-car cameras in those additional like six or seven cars. So right now, um, we just put a number in there that we think would possibly cover that. But that's something that we need to look at i- in next year's budget. So So I think I can stand for any questions on the actual law enforcement budget. We'll get into dispatch and jail here shortly.
Questions for the chief?
I have a question.
Deputy Mayor?
So I, I think it was a couple of years back where officers got to take their, their, their cars home, right? Is, is, do you kind of foresee that rolling back to where we can maybe go back to where we were at? I know it was due to recruitment, you know, to help build up the force, but is, do you see it going back?
But that was a decision made by the previous city manager, or two city managers ago, I suppose. And she authorized that. It, it's, it's something that's mandatory subject to bargaining with the union. And the reason I know that is because I, I know the ruling. And it's a ruling that was made by the Public Employees Relations Commission twenty-five years ago. And it's the City of Kalama, it's a perk ruling sixty-eight fifty-three, if anybody wants to look it up. So we'd have to, we'd have to negotiate that with the union, whether they'd be willing to do that or not, I don't know. I can tell you, every other law enforcement agency in Yakima County has take-home vehicles. And I think we would probably lose officers if we didn't have them. Now, um, as far as how far they can take them or whatever, I mean, that stuff's all stuff that we can negotiate when their contract's up.
So I think right now the, the limit, what is it, thirty miles?
Correct.
Counselor.
But I do remember that part of the argument when we went ahead and allowed for the cars, patrol cars to go home with the officers was, was supposed to give us faster response. They're getting, you know, back in, in duty and it was also part of the recruitment to new officers that would be coming in. And, uh, but it seems like you're right. If, if it's part of the union thing now, that would be difficult to negotiate out, wouldn't it?
It would be difficult.
Yeah, that's something that Mr. Bridges would speak on more. He does the negotiating or he, he coordinates the negotiating, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only money.
Yeah. And I think, I think one of the other incentives that counsel was told about when we were talking about this was decreased wear and tear on police vehicles. Because when we were using them, I mean, just leaving the engine running from shift to shift and they were, and they were going almost twenty-four hours. There was increased wear and tear on the vehicles and there was less wear and tear on a vehicle when the engine shut down. And also that allows maintenance on the vehicle when the officer's off duty and as is the vehicle off duty. There were certain mechanical advantages to having take-home vehicles. And we used, I think Yakima at the time as an example, where their per-vehicle expenses had dropped considerably because the engines were being shut off, they're cooling down. And it was easier to do maintenance on them. So those were some of the things that were said to counsel that, you know, to, to make this something that. And, and, you know, my, coming from a mechanic's family, those are things that are valid. Shutting an engine off for a while does allow it to cool down and, yeah, people say rest, but that's not really what it is.
Cool.
Any other questions on the law enforcement budget?
All right, carry on.
Okay, we'll move to page fifty-nine. Communications and dispatch, so. Monica mentioned possibly outsourcing dispatch, so we're in the very early stages of that. So the way this came about was Toppenish, who we contracted with for dispatch, and, and they paid us, it was roughly around twenty thousand dollars a month to dispatch for them. They left and found dispatching services cheaper. So I was tasked with seeing if, if there was anything out there cheaper. I know that because the radio tax has recently passed, that the plan county-wide is to regionalize dispatch, like is done in every other county in the state except Yakima for whatever reason, going back years. It's the only county in the state that doesn't have a regional dispatch. So I reached out to the sheriff and the sheriff's office and said, hey, if, if this was possible, what would it look like? They said, yeah, it's possible. We, we haven't, I mean, this is when they could do it exactly and, and what it would cost us and everything like that. I have a meeting with them next week, but it, it's really early whether this can work or not. Now, it's not as easy as, okay, we're just going to shut down dispatch and dispatch is gone. The person in the dispatch center also monitors inmates and opens the electronic doors for jail staff to get throughout the jail while they're working. So that would still have to be staffed. We wouldn't be able to just eliminate a hundred percent of those positions. So I've, I've talked with Jim a little bit about that, but I'm hoping to get some answers on whether it's feasible a hundred percent or not next, on the seventeenth, when I meet with the sheriff's office and then to come back with Jim and Monica and talk more about it. We have not talked to staff about it and since it, it was mentioned tonight, I've already gotten two texts. So, um, so this is very early and, and, but I mean, it is a possibility. I, I honestly think that Yakima County Dispatch Services will regionalize in the next year and a half to two years, regardless whether we do this this year or not. So that's the, but that's where these salary savings are that Monica came up with here in the, in the dispatch, so. Any questions on that?
All right, further questions for the chief? Hearing none, carry on.
Okay. Let's go into the jail and corrections. So again, the personnel and benefits is going to be the same as, as before. Capital outlay is one I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to because you'll see that it's a significant increase. Well, there's never been capital outlay money in the, in the jail. So as you can imagine, as, as things break or, or whatever in the jail, we have to fix those. We don't have the option not to. So this is a capital outlay to fix some doors that have been broken for quite a while that we need to get fixed. And, and I talked to Monica about that. We also have increased our jail rate about ten dollars a night. And we also just signed a contract, well, Union Gap just approved a contract this week at their council, has not made it to the City of Sunnyside yet that, for Mr. Bridges to sign. But, um, so I think Union Gap is going to be using us a lot. It sounds like their chief is interested in that. I've, I've been talking to him throughout this week over here. One of the things we just have to sort out is how we're going to get their, uh, their inmates to, to court. Because they use district court in Yakima, but they're talking about checking if the court can transfer their people to be seen in Grandview Court. So there's a lot of logistics there, but I think that Union Gap is going to be using us pretty significantly, which hopefully will increase our daily population and, and increase our revenue. So that's what I've got there. Any, any questions I'm available to answer them? As, as, as Monica said earlier, the jail budget, or the police department budget is very tough. Because last year, to get a budget done and passed at the last minute, everything was thrown into one fund administration. So if you, if you, it's really hard to break out in the budget. Okay, what is a corrections cost? What's a dispatch cost? What's, what's a corrections, or I'm sorry, a detective cost or, or something of that nature? It's all, it was all lumped into one spot. So Monica and I are committed to try and straighten it out this year so that this time next year, we have more, we can see, see that better, so.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Chief, were, were we still trying to do the, the rate study then?
So I, I, that's interesting. Because our rate study that we signed, that somebody stopped, they couldn't tell me who, was for twenty-four thousand dollars. They have now came back with a new quote for fifty-six thousand dollars to do the rate study. Whether we could, we could probably recruit twenty-four, whether we recruit fifty-six, I don't know. And with the budget issues, I think that's a pretty tall task to take. Uh, I don't know if Monica and her team are capable of doing a, a study of that magnitude or not, but that's going to be pretty, uh, I'm not opposed to it, it's just really expensive. And I was shocked when they came back with the, with the new, um, rate for, for the, for us to do the, the study. And they claimed that it was somebody, whoever had presented that one was using twenty twenty-four numbers, not twenty twenty-five numbers, which I don't know about that. They're saying that this is going to be more comprehensive than was originally quoted. We're asking for a jail rate study, that hasn't changed. I'm not sure what is more comprehensive than before or not. I, I haven't gotten into that with them. They literally just emailed me back at three o'clock today. Wow. Um, and, and I emailed them a week and a half ago asking why the, the cost was so significantly different, so.
Rob, not to interrupt you, but we found out that all their emails were being blocked as well.
Oh, okay. All right, well, so anyway, I got this email this afternoon, so. Um, so that's, I guess, kind of where we're at on that. We can move forward with it. I don't think the money's going to be in this budget for us to do that. We'd have to find some money somewhere.
Okay, further questions? All right, carry on.
Okay. I think, next we have the public safety tax. This is the three-tenths money. We have a certain amount of money that comes in based off of three-tenths of a percent sales tax. And traditionally it has paid for wages. And I, I talked with Monica a little bit about this last week and it was broke out into a multitude of different things. So some money for supplies, some money for this, some money for that. And I, I asked her last week, I said, can we just make this really easy and just pay for two staff and put the rest towards cars? So that way everything's allocated just in two areas and we're not having to break it out over twenty-five different areas. So I'm hoping that we can do that. Monica and I talked about that because before it was under like fifteen line items and they just put small amounts in there to, to spend the money. Um, if we attribute it to those two specific areas, it would be easier and it would be more lump sum type payments coming out of that three-tenth sales tax. And that is collected at the register.
So that was.
Counselor?
So that was cars and what was the other thing?
Personnel is, is what my thought is.
Other questions, Deputy Mayor?
So the reason that the revenue is down is because of the sales taxes down, right?
Correct. The sales tax is projected to be down this year.
Okay, further questions?
Oh, gosh.
All right.
I, I think that's all I had and if you don't mind, I might go get, meet with some other chiefs and grab something to eat.
All right, thank you, Chief, for sticking around as long as you did.
No problem, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
All right, next we have community development.
Our code enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement on sixty-two.
Did I skip one? I turned too many pages.
Page sixty-two?
Yeah, code enforcement.
Yep, I turned too many pages. Uh, okay, code enforcement. It's a single man show. So it's pretty straightforward with the single man show. Code enforcement is one of those bargaining units you're going to see that we have, we're having to make up some funds for because they were not under negotiation since two thousand twenty-three. So the increase is a double step increase because it, it's a percentage increase for twenty-five plus a percentage increase going into twenty-six and it, for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. You'll see, um, the increase come up.
Okay, questions on this item?
So what, what goes into the salary and wages if it's one person?
That's the one person.
Wow.
It's a negotiated contract, so there's, it's, it's a bargaining unit. So they make the wages with the bargaining. There is also allocated into this, the person who does the permitting, a portion of their wages does get allocated to this as well because they oversee the stuff with permits and with building. So the permitting, permit tech, who deals with the customers that walk in and with all the permitting, with all the planning, with all the building, get allocated out as well to those departments.
So.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So it's not necessarily just the one man who goes out and looks at the buildings and so on and so forth. There's also part of the salary and benefits goes for the person who greets people at the front door as they come in and help them with their filling out their permits and so on and so forth. So it's, it's more than just one person.
It's one point.
How, how many hours a day does the person who's, who's in there doing the permitting work? And that she works in yours.
So she, she, she works eight hours a day. She's not only doing permitting, she's taking care of, obviously helping Cory and myself with the planning committee. If there is people that need to meet with myself and Cory, she takes care of all that with the, the help of obviously my administrative assistant, myself and Cory, we can walk up there and take care as much as we can. But she is, she does a lot up there.
But her salary comes out of multiple funds.
It comes out of multiple.
Yes.
And part of it comes out of this particular code enforcement?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not really a one-man show. It's, that was, that got a little confusing. It's a little confusing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions?
Yeah, I have one. So is, is this code enforcement for, it's not for building enforcement, right? Building code enforcement is more for in like, um, random violation, right? Big weeds growing.
It is pertaining to building plumbing, mechanical permits and signs.
Gotcha, okay.
So just to clear that up, code enforcement, you are correct. It does take care of all the weeds. Cory's wages does come out of it because he takes care of all the inspection of plumbing, foundations and all the above from there. So, but code enforcement does take care of obviously all the weed abatements. Then you can help me out.
Yeah, he'll take care of like unpermitted projects, things like that as well as part of code enforcement, so.
Yeah.
So then I have a follow-up question. Is, is he allowed to, to, to cite somebody? Because if I remember correctly, and, and I think when you emailed, how many citations, you know, have been issued, there really hasn't been issued a, a lot of citations, so. Where do we, where do we start, right? Because if, if residents don't see any, any consequences, like they're going to keep doing it. And our cost is just going to keep going up.
And currently, nobody at City Hall is commissioned to write citations. The code enforcement officer will get a hold of the police department on certain situations and then the police department will issue the citation for it, but it all started with code enforcement.
Gotcha.
And my future plan for this coming year is to get a better program in there. Get so many, so much of that part of it addressed, so.
All right. Thank you, Cory.
One of the things that code enforcement also does is when there's been water shut off, um, we can tell how long the water's been shut off of residents. Sometimes they sold the home or the home's just not livable, they'll shut the water off. And after so many days, we make sure code, we give a list to code enforcement to make sure nobody's trying to habitate the home while it's, doesn't have any water.
Okay.
Just one more question there. If, if the, I just noticed also you have a reduction in the personal benefits. But from twenty-five to twenty-six, there's an increase in salaries and wages and that's because of the union.
Correct.
Right? And so then how, how then do the personal benefits then go down substantially there?
The wages and benefits went down again due to those allocations.
Because of what?
allocations, people being allocated to that particular fund that don't necessarily have anything to do with that fund account.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, street.
Community development?
Community development.
My gosh, I just, I'm trying to get to it faster than you guys.
Really eager to finish, aren't you?
Oh, man.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So community development, right now, we're going to be hiring a development technician.
So we're going to be hiring a development technician, which will be upfront with our planning. That person will take care of all the phone calls, all, um, if there's any thing that needs to be helped, reservation, you know, they'll be helping, uh, obviously my assistant to help with the reservation with the community center, um, the pool, uh, because there is a lot that goes into this. So, and then obviously with the development technician will be helping us, us out, myself and Cory and, uh, Ms. Espinoza, um, with other duties that, you know, that we need help with.
Okay.
Is.
Is, I guess, go ahead, go ahead. I'm trying to think of the question.
Is, is that a new position that's gonna be on the?
So that, that position was already in in our budget. It was just never filled. So.
We, we chose not to, to cut that one or the additional building inspector position because of the increased workload from all the development that is going on with the residential construction that we're seeing. And so we chose not to cut those two positions, the building, additional building inspector and the development technician.
Okay.
Do, do I recall correctly that we, when we were talking about that person, we were looking for somebody who would be bilingual?
Yes, and yeah, we are, that is one of the, that was something we, we put on there that we would like. So we have.
Especially for the use with the computers and filling out the permits and all that different.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they'll be helping out the customer service so we can keep the doors open more. Cory and I and Debbie and my administration assistant has been keeping those doors open a lot more and, you know, doing a lot more customer service.
Excellent.
So I have a question here. Your other services and charges is up considerably from twelve thousand for appropriated for twenty-five up to ninety-two thousand for twenty-six proposed.
Wow.
Why the big jump?
Huge.
I believe that was probably also allocation, but we do contract out for planning services with HLA, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that reflects a more accurate depiction because twenty-five is only twelve thousand was appropriated.
We know we probably use more now.
Yeah, and I'm sure we did with, in twenty-five.
And, yeah, so we do not have obviously a, a community developer director or a planning director. So we've been using HLA. Joseph Calhoun.
So we anticipate using them considerably in twenty-six as well?
A lot of that also is off a grant that we have gotten for the, like, the climate resilient.
Some of those ones were already accounted for and those were things that we've already agreed to, the, the contracts were already signed.
Okay.
So that's just a projection of things that were already in motion.
Right, and I think that part, that comp grant, comp plan grant with the climate resiliency.
Yes.
Portion of it.
And as far as public works portion, I've been utilizing.
Okay, sounds good. Counselor Hart?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, I know that we've, maybe we talked about it earlier, kind of the business of not hiring a new economic development director. I think that, how are we actually seeing that being broke down? So that we actually get our money's worth for economic development because you're talking, you've got your planning and you got your public works over here and the things that you do there with the streets and so, but how how do, you know, we still are trying to build ordinances and some policies things and economic development was some of the things that Trevor was doing when he was here, Trevor Martin. And so a lot of those things I'm, I'm just kind of wondering if there's, we still shouldn't be figuring out somehow to have that position filled. Because you got, you got the economic development, community economic development, which is really important. We have the girls here on, the commission representatives here on Monday night telling them what they're trying to do with business classes and different things that you're trying to do. And then, and then also can get people to come to town. And then also having people, you know, helping them figure out, well, what are the ordinances looking like? You know, to all these different things. It seems like we ought to be really, I know it's a tough year, but there, we should not lose sight of the fact that we do need an economic development director. I know we have a spread out here, but.
And between the three of us, I believe we've been doing a really good job. We have been. I know, working with Mr. Bridges and Cory, we have, we're spread thin, but we are moving forward with what we have. Obviously, like everything else, you know, we can always do a little bit more, which I believe that we all have, especially Mr. Bridges, you know, taking on what he's taken on, Cory, what he's taken on with the ordinance and everything and myself. So I, as of right now, I think, you know, to, to myself, my opinion is we're, we are doing fine with what we can and, you know, obviously working with the economic, the community development boards. We just need to get in better communication. And once Cory and I communicate with the committee and get more grasp of it, I believe we can flourish from there.
As, as far as ordinances and, and, and things of that nature go, that's where we, we rely quite a bit on HLA for code interpretation. And so we, we do have those developers come through and there is the permitting process and the, the planning process. We bring them in, you know, on the ground floor as well. So that those folks that are sitting across the table from us, we get them the information they need to, they can, they can properly plan and bring hopefully, you know, bring your development to fruition, so.
I just, I just didn't want to lose sight of it.
Yeah, Ms. Ripley?
I'd say Jim brings a lot to the table there, you know, if, let me just leave it at that.
I was gonna say to you, the inspector position is gonna help a lot.
Yeah.
So I'll be able to be in the office more doing some of those stuff while the inspections are still getting done, because right now that's my priority, is getting those inspections done promptly, so.
Right.
Okay, further questions?
Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it.
All right, moving on. I think we're on page sixty-six.
All you guys.
Okay. Streets of, obviously, we are working on to making sure that we take care of all the weeds. Potholes, sinkholes, they help out with obviously sidewalks. They, my street department's been working very hard on getting our street lights. Obviously the stoplights taken care of when they need to be fixed or need adjustments. So we, we, they've been very busy, you know, we have fifty-six miles of ride away and they have been going all out. So I appreciate everything they've done and the help they have given us. I've always stated that without them, I can't do my job, so I appreciate them. As long with my other departments, the water sewer and the parks.
Okay, questions on the streets?
Maybe not.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I just, it probably goes back to the parks, but I was just thinking when we were, we talked earlier about the addition of the Yakima Valley pathway coming into, to the part of our city parks. Some of the, the costs for that, for mo, extra mowing and spraying of weeds and that sort of thing. Are you making plans for that to be part of the
Yes.
streets and, or the?
The parks, the parks take care of all that, you know, the pathway, make sure that the grass is green, the grass is mowed and all the weeds, all the way down to Sunny View Park.
Well, and we.
Go ahead.
Tier Road, isn't it?
Yeah, so, and with budget going on both us and the city of Grandview, we, I have not got a chance to sit with Shane yet to, to go and get the ILA developed for that, that pathway maintenance.
And there is no, there is no ending fund balance for twenty-twenty-six proposed?
No. No, because I don't have an exact beginning balance and so that I, I don't have an ending balance.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, question.
So it's, is the street sweeping going back to the streets department? Because my understanding that it was changed a couple of years ago to the sewer department?
Yes, that is correct.
But that's actually stormwater.
Oh, stormwater, yeah, okay.
So it, it goes to the stormwater and that it belongs to the wastewater treatment plant.
Gotcha. Other questions? Ms. Ripley?
Wasn't there, was it a new street sweeper that was gonna be ordered when Cus was here? He was talking about?
No, ma'am, that was a, a new sewer router, the vac truck.
Oh, the vac truck.
Yes, yes. Eventually, it should be here next year. Obviously, what I was told is we missed a date that could have got it here this year. So when we missed that date, it did push us back. I believe we're supposed to receive it by February, March, within that time.
That budgeted?
That, apparently that was budgeted in there or, and taken care of. The, the street sweeper is something I'm, I'm looking forward to because obviously our street sweeper is very old and I wanted to be able to use it obviously for the street sweeping and the storm drains, so that's one, one of my goals to be able to try to get for us.
So street sweeper is just a kind of little educational note here. They're like a helicopter. So you run it for an hour, you gotta repair it for four hours. So they're, they're fine up until you hit that five-year mark, but when you hit that five-year mark, they fall off the cliff. I mean, it's every part starts breaking on those things. And so they are expensive, they are heavy-duty, severe-duty machines, but they, and they're not cheap. And so, you know, if we need to look at getting a new street sweeper, because I know we're at that.
Yes, we're at that.
We're past that five-year mark.
Yeah, we're way past it, so.
And so that's why you, you're not seeing it out on the street as often, you're not seeing our vacuum out on the street as often, which is more the sewer side and stormwater side because that piece of equipment is, is.
Way over outdated.
Yeah.
So I, I do remember one time we bought a new street sweeper and it turned out to be the wrong thing and it did absolutely a horrible job, so we had to swap it out to get something different and get the current one that we have because we had ordered the wrong one. I remember that happening. I can't remember if that happened just before I got on council, but I do remember the stories about that and it was.
I remember writing some stories about that.
So make sure we get the right one when we do order.
Wasn't it Grandview that needed one like that?
Something like that, yeah.
And so it was, it.
Yeah.
We managed to work together, but yeah, it's always best to get the right one the first time, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jim, so one of the requirements for stormwater is that the streets are swept.
Right.
Is the street sweeper completely in stormwater? A charge to stormwater?
Yes, the street sweeper is completely in stormwater. So.
Is, is, it's not used exclusively for stormwater, though?
No, so it is used to sweep the streets, which is obviously the curbs, the curbs which goes to the stormwater. So that's, that's why it's under wastewater treatment plant and everything, all, everything's allocated to the stormwater.
That's where, that's where they're housed at, in, in, because that's collections. The street sweeper is also used at the airport as well, so that's the only other place it's gonna be used besides sweeping the gutters in the streets.
The one we replace the street sweeper, is that gonna come out of stormwater exclusively?
It should.
Uh, I don't know if I agree with that.
Okay, further comments, questions? All right, going on.
It's, it's stormwater, so we'll continue to talk about.
You're talking about stormwater.
So stormwater. So we do get funded. I believe it's do you know, remember how much it was? It would.
You mean from ecology?
Yeah, from ecology, so.
They usually throw in a hundred thousand.
So a hundred thousand dollars, which is funded. We, we try to, we do use that money for the wages of stormwater. I know working with stormwater, you know, and, and getting the education of our MS four, which is some, the Department of Ecology has this look over for our stormwater program that we have in the city of Sunnyside. But I've, I've never done the MS four, but I have learning, as I go, I've taken a class, got certified. I know my supervisor has also. We're working toward to make it a, a better program. I'm working with Yakima County.
Okay, questions?
I have one more question. Jim, can, are we gonna get a readout on, on these proposed changes to the commercial versus residential?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. The, the rate study, the rate schedule? Yeah, we can get that for you. We can email out it tomorrow.
Yeah.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah. That was the rate analysis that we did, Monica.
Yeah.
So.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I was just wondering now, now that we've looked at all the different pockets of money and what we think we're gonna, you know, put all of that stuff. So if you were to, to, to sit down and say, we expect to have revenues in the amount of, and expenditures in the amount of for the total budget for the year twenty-twenty-six, what's that number?
So is that going to be for all funds?
Everybody, the whole, this whole thing.
Our revenue is looking to be approximately thirty-five million, one hundred seventy thousand, five hundred and twenty-six.
And, and the expenditures then?
Our expenditures without cutting costs is thirty-five thousand, or thirty-five million, nine hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-three.
Okay, but you also have the one for, with the cuts. That's on that page two there?
Yep. And then with cuts would be thirty-five million, two hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-four.
That's huge.
And there is a couple of other ideas that we've been floating around. One of the ideas is, right now, the leased cars are pretty spendy. It's about forty thousand dollars a month. And so it's understandable for the police department to have those vehicles, but I don't believe that the rest of the city needs to have leased vehicles that are getting swapped out. I think that we have a maintenance crew and I think we should put them to work by having our own vehicles and keeping them all in-house and maintaining them and doing everything in-house and owning our own vehicles and then having a capital plan that's going to rotate vehicles out when it's time. Paying as much as we do for some of these vehicles is, is, is pretty substantial.
Did you have a comment, Counselor?
Yeah, well, I think we've gone back and forth on this. I think on, on various occasions, we've gone back on whether or not to lease the cars, own the cars. It's been, it's been a matter of.
The trouble has been, it's like I mentioned before, like the, the idea was to have a plan in place to be able to purchase cars at X period of time that we put a certain amount of money in that fund every month. And it turns out that that, for whatever reason, didn't happen. And so in order to have better later model vehicles, more reliable vehicles, then this was, this was an attempt to try something different. And I, I will support it for the police department. I think it is important for our police to have reliable vehicles that they can depend upon. But I do agree with you that for other departments, I think the city can more economically purchase a vehicle and then maintain that vehicle. We, we managed to get those pickups that were bought when, in two thousand eight to last for a very long time and that was with the help of our maintenance department, but I don't think anybody liked driving a two thousand eight pickup anymore in twenty twenty, but I don't know that we're about making.
There's nothing wrong with that. I have a two thousand eight.
And my work truck's a ninety-six, but you know, that's.
If it makes you feel any better, when I was public works director here in the two thousands, in two thousand and five, when I replaced the fleet, our average vehicle was twenty-five years old. So we, we kept them going there and when we got rid of that, that old fleet, we ended up taking forty thousand dollars of parts back to KN Auto and got a refund. That's how many, you know, so we did save a little bit of money there, but that, and, and that's the, that's always the hard part. If you're not gonna have a set aside fund to replace vehicles and you don't have to replace them every year, you know, or all of them at the same time, you need to rotate them and get them in. And so you start with your project and, and, but if you're not going to replace them, then you're always gonna have an aged-out fleet. And the longer they, the longer they're on the street, the more it's gonna cost you in maintenance. And so you've gotta play that balancing game, but again, you've gotta have a pot of money to start with and we're just not there.
And, you know. As well as the leased vehicles, you know, starting to look more into getting some more grants to help purchase some of these capital things that we need for our capital funds. And prior to government, I worked in nonprofit, so I used to work with a parish that was attached with the archdiocese and then with Catholic charities and then El Progra. And so I worked with them for a long time and grant writing is something I like to do, so I might just. a a parish that was attached with the archdiocese and then with Catholic charities and then El Programa. And so I worked with them for a long time and grant writing is something I like to do, so I might just on my weekends start doing it again.
You do realize that we tried for a year to recruit a grant writer, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and we're unable to find anybody. So now knowing that you'd like to write grants, uh we have expectations. And hopes. Grant writing is a gift, and if you're able to do that, um that's something special. So certainly appreciate that.
We will, you know, uh you know, based on some of the comments tonight, uh you know, we'll continue to to whittle this down. Um uh you know, if if we think it's necessary, um we, you know, we may ask for another special meeting to go over the budget again before the twenty fourth.
I didn't see that.
Uh and then that way when the twenty fourth, is it the twenty fourth rolls around, we do the.
Twenty fourth is the final hearing.
Final hearing, so.
Yeah, I I do ask that if there's anything, you know, please email me with questions or ideas or.
Okay, Counselor Hart?
Let's just make sure that the emails are unblocked, so they get through, you know.
They don't get blocked.
Just checking.
Why do they get blocked from their company or or uh, you know?
Or they spam or?
I I found that it's uh something that Microsoft is adding to the emails. It's uh it it's been customers that are using Office three sixty five and every time an email goes through a server, it, there's a portion of code that gets added to it that is being interpreted as an Arabic font.
Hmm.
And our spam filter is catching it, because there's no reason we should be receiving emails in an Arabic font. Um and it's been consistently with uh Office three sixty five uh users.
Another reason, though, why we should need to upgrade our emails. This is not helping us.
All right, so as you can see on page eighteen of the book here, the dates for this year going forward, on November twenty, we're hoping to um copies of the proposed preliminary budget will be made available to the public no later than six weeks prior to January one. January one is when the twenty twenty six budget begins to take effect. And so public needs to be able to see that and make comments on it. On November twenty four, that's our next regular council meeting. We will have a final hearing on the proposed budget. We're we're saying that we're gonna have it on twenty four. We need to have it on or before the first Monday of December. Um it is something that can be continued from day to day, but no later than the twenty fifth day prior to the next fiscal year. So we do have to be watching the timelines here to make sure that we get everything accomplished appropriately. On December eight is our first regular meeting for December adoption of the twenty twenty six budget following public hearing and prior to the beginning of the ensuing fiscal year. So we have that before us. And the goal is to get the budget adopted on December eight, but that may mean, as mentioned, that we have another special meeting to go over things if we need to do that. And that is council's prerogative to decide if you want more information, if you want to ask more questions in a public meeting. And again, I encourage our newly elected to attend these meetings as well. Also, um even though you didn't have a participation part in this meeting tonight, please ask questions. Um clarify things in as much as possible, because you will need to uh be able to understand this budget going forward. So don't be shy about asking questions.
And feel free to reach out to my office. Uh if you got questions, you know, I'm there, we can take them, we can do our best to answer. So.
And and also I would encourage you, since you're all here, um start learning the SMC, the Sunnyside Municipal Code, read through that a few times. Uh council rules the procedure. We will be updating that in the next couple of weeks. Um but code of conduct, all of those kinds of things, familiarize yourself with that sort of things. And then the A W C has uh all sorts of orientation material that's available for you as well. And council members can help as well.
There's a upcoming uh A W C mandatory for all newly elect.
That's correct.
And with our city clerk not here, she's usually the one that handles.
Right.
Ordinating that, so.
And the clerk will reach out to you when she gets back. She's uh she's very good about that sort of thing, but don't be shy about starting to dig into some of those. A W C website is just a huge benefit for all of us and stuff that that you need to know, stuff that'll help you. And familiarization with the Sunnyside Municipal Code is very helpful as well. So you don't have to necessarily do like the deputy mayor did and memorize the whole thing before you take office, but you know, being familiar with it's a good idea.
And then pursue to rewrite it.
All right, is there any further comments or business to come before council this evening? Hearing none and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We made it less than three hours. I was convinced it was gonna be longer than that.
Yes, it does.
I do have questions. I cannot. I just, I'm sorry, I just, oh.
I know, me too.